We want to begin our meeting this evening, call this meeting to order. We appreciate you being here. And would invite all of you, if you would, to stand and we'll have the pledge of allegiance, asking Mr. Ackersley to lead us in that pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item will be our public comment period. And let me go over our rules relative to this public comment period. The public comment period shall not exceed thirty minutes, with individual presentations limited to two minutes. Speakers will be shown a sign when they have thirty seconds left and a stop sign when their two minutes has ended. Ms. Hanson will be to my left and you'll see both of those. We would ask you at the end of two minutes that you stop, and we go to our next speaker, if you would please. Public comment is reserved for speakers who reside within Davis School District unless otherwise noted by the presiding board member. Please provide your name and the topic you wish to address. Speakers shall be recognized and invited to provide comment by the presiding board member. The presiding board member may hear public comments in any order or sequence and is not limited by arrangement shown on the sign up sheets. The public comment period shall not be used to air complaints concerning bidding, contracts, employment, or personnel issues, to criticize or defame district employees or board members, or to make complaints for which other avenues for appeal exist. This period can't be used for public comments regarding individual student education issues. Person speaking shall direct comments to the presiding board member. Members of the board and the superintendent may ask questions of any person who addresses the board only upon approval of the presiding board member. The board is unable by law to deliberate or take action on items raised during the public comment period that is not otherwise on the board agenda. So we'll begin with Amy Stevens. Invite you to come up to the podium.
Can I just go?
Yep.
Okay. My son came home yesterday and went straight to bed. He told me it was a rough day and he wanted to just sleep. This used to be an odd occurrence at my house. It's not anymore. He's struggling and I feel very helpless. One of my sons is attending Farmington High School. He began Summit his ninth grade year at Centennial Junior High. Prior to ninth grade, he was an A student, taking several honors and AP classes. His ninth grade year, he was enrolled in honors English, honors math a year ahead, biology, and AP human geography. None of these classes seemed to be a struggle, but around midterms, he was failing several, and his counselor reached out to me. She noticed that Tyler was failing, and this was out of character. She noticed that he was completing the AFAs, which are like the quizzes in the challenge areas, and but wasn't doing some of the other things. We decided the best thing was to reach out to his teachers to find out what was going on. I have right here with me the responses from all of his Summit teachers. Every one of these teachers knew that he was on screens all the time. Entire class periods with the rest of his classmates, but Tyler wasn't on, he was on games, he was off task. They all knew this, but none of them reached out to me. Because of the time, we know that he has a problem with this because we're his parents. We monitor that at home and we've known it since he was little. He built his own computer. He's brilliant. But Summit has put him on screen so much, and when he's on screens, he feels disconnected and depressed. We need the human contact of teachers. We need this connection.
That's your two minutes, Ms. Stevens.
Please get rid of Summit.
Leann Thompson? Am I reading that right? Do we have a Leann Thompson? Blake, anybody in the foyer with the name Thompson? Jody Thompson?
I want to express my thanks to the board and the administration for allowing parents to express their experiences, good and bad, regarding the Summit platform. I've had conversations with Mr. Newey as well as administrative personnel, and I appreciate that they have always been kind and open-minded with my concerns. I was a previous educator with the Davis School District as an elementary teacher. As we all know, educators don't necessarily get into this profession for the money, but as I learned along the way, they do it because they have teacher heart. My teacher heart allowed me to experience the magic that goes on in the classroom. The magic of seeing a light bulb go on in students' minds, knowing the joy they feel when they have discovered something new. The giant smile on their face, knowing that they love coming to school each day. I made it a priority in my classroom to continuously create that experience for those students and for them to fall in love with education. As I have watched my son experience his eighth grade year and his first year participating in Summit, I have watched his light for education dim. He has quickly become overwhelmed by the workload placed on him, the expectations of content assessments, projects, cooldowns, PFAs, that seem impossible for him to conquer. I have often heard him cry how he hates school now and wants to give up and fail because it's not worth it. I've watched my constantly optimistic niece cry in fetal position under her desk because the stress of Summit is too much for her to deal with. I've listened to a friend declare that she knows her son is cheating to get by, but she doesn't care because the only way her student can pass, that's the only way her student can pass the class. And do you know what my teacher heart hears in all of this? It's desperation. Desperation of students and parents, desperation of a program that's not working for a large group of students. This breaks my heart. The teacher heart that wants every child to experience joy of education and feeling success at school. While I know that there are many students that are successful using this program, we cannot forget about the students who struggle. The Summit program needs to become a choice. Let's not force them to participate in something that clearly isn't working for them. As we all know, the PCBL approach is supposed to empower students to take responsibility for their learning by giving them a voice and a choice. It's not intended to put every student inside the same box by forcing them to participate into a program.
Ms. Thompson, that's your two minutes.
Thank you.
Robert Day?
So when my thirteen-year-old daughter was in fourth grade, she struggled in math. No matter how hard she worked at it, she couldn't grasp the concepts. When we would sit down with her and trying to help her, she had trouble concentrating because she decided that she was stupid and that she would never be able to understand these concepts, and that she would always be a failure. Then she started fifth grade with a different teacher who was great at math and was able to understand and to teach her. And so now math is one of her favorite subjects, and she even had an opportunity to share with us that she was helping classmates understand the concept. Well, fast forward a few years, and now she's in junior high, the Centennial Junior High, and she's having the same experiences with Summit that she had when she was in fourth grade. She is behind in her classes despite staying after three days a week for the last seven weeks. Each time that I pick her up, I can tell by the droop in her shoulders that whether she has passed a content assessment that day or not, and usually the answer is no. The Summit platform is not an effective way for her to learn. She feels stupid, like a failure, and that she will never get it no matter how hard she works. She's being left behind with the Summit program. At this time, she's going through the process of realizing that she cannot continue with Summit and make it through high school. The thought of starting over to a new school terrifies her because when we moved a few years ago, she had to attend a new school, and she knows that what it feels like to go through that without having any friends. If Centennial continues with the Summit program, we were gonna, we will have to pull her out and get her into a school that doesn't do Summit. Please remove this program so that my daughter doesn't have to choose between schooling and her friends, and she will be able to succeed.
Jennifer Savage?
My name is Jen Savage. I am here to comment about the Summit platform. I hate the Summit platform and what it has done to my family. It has made my children lose their love for learning. It has not prepared my two daughters for college. It has made me be a homeschool mom, even though I do not want to be. It's caused us to question the educational philosophy in this district. It's made me wonder if my children really matter to the district. It has caused endless anxiety and tears in our home. It has caused us to think about moving somewhere else, to get away from this platform. It has kept me up many nights crying for my children. There is really nothing good I can say about Summit. My son is willing to give up his friends that he has been friends with for six years to go to a non-Summit school. They, all of his friends have put in variances to different schools, and if Summit continues at his school, they might all end up at three or four different high schools. When, at a time in his life when friends are most important, this is what our district is making us do. You choose Summit or you choose your friends. I'm sorry. You choose not Summit or you choose your friends. It shouldn't be this way. We shouldn't have to choose to go to a school with your friends or to choose a platform that does not work for you. I'm asking the board to please remove Summit from our district, and if that is not possible, then please make it an opt-in option. So for children that don't work on Summit and it doesn't work for them, that they have a choice. I spoke to a friend of mine that told me her husband, who's a teacher, is just barely, barely hanging on, and he hates Summit. He hates, he's frustrated by it, and so this is also affecting our teachers. Thank you.
Melinda Merrill?
Sixteen, good-natured, bright-eyed, witty, high honor roll, seventh through tenth grade, social, loves school, athletic. This was my son prior to junior year at Farmington High. Enter Summit. This is what my son said. Not a fan, extremely boring, too much time on a screen, no enthusiasm by teachers, little teaching, no help. Go look at getting your sources. Mentor is mean and doesn't help and points me out to the class as a bad example. Extra credit not taught, but required for an A. Desire to complete assignments waned. He fell behind in Summit, which he didn't really comprehend what behind meant because there were no due dates, and he was told he had all year to complete assignments. We as parents intervened and realized with my son that he was quite far behind. It was apparent that he may never be on track again in the program. There was no solid plan in place for this situation. In a traditional classroom, a teacher can make accommodations for students who fall behind for any number of reasons and help them to get back on track with the majority of the class. A teacher may shorten particular assignments, have students complete odd or even questions, give a shorter evaluation. This was not the case with my son. There were no interventions from the school. I'm a highly engaged parent with an accountant in Summit and encouraged my son to complete assignments in a timely manner. His mentor teacher at the time, however, did not encourage my son or reach out to us. Instead, she belittled my son in front of his class for being behind in Summit. The results from months of struggling with Summit: crying, not wanting to go to school, crying when he came home, apathetic, discontent, no longer social, tired, irritable, mood swings, loss of appetite. Yes, these are all signs of depression. He began to think he was dumb. He said, "I'd rather dig ditches for the rest of my life than complete another Summit assignment." He was in a dark Summit hole with no hope. We need feasible, sensible plans to assist students struggling with Summit. We need support, interventions, and accommodations for students. We need Summit to be an opt-in option for students.
Brooke Britt?
We as concerned parents of West Point Elementary, currently the largest elementary in the district, are here on two separate matters. The boundary proposal and the need for schools in our area. We ask that you please consider what we have to say. Our first concern is the recent boundary proposal. In that proposal, there are only ninety-two students that would move to West Clinton Elementary. We know that ninety-two is not enough. We have eight hundred and seventy-four houses coming that will yield six hundred and fifty-six students in the next two to three years. We currently have eleven hundred and five students enrolled in our school. We know other schools are over capacity as well, but there are schools in our area that have empty classrooms and are landlocked with no growth in their boundaries. Clinton Elementary is four point one miles away and is sitting with seven empty classrooms. Parkside Elementary is also four point one miles away and has three empty classrooms. We ask that you move students from West Clinton to Clinton to fill those empty classrooms so that West Clinton can take more students from our school to lighten our load until we can get a new school. We also ask that you consider moving some of our community classrooms from West Point to Parkside to free up some rooms in our school and give our prep teachers a classroom again. We understand that the bond will be voted on this November, and we will support your bond and do everything in our power to educate those around us and those in our district as to why we need to vote an approval of this bond. With the number of students coming, it is obvious that we will be needing a high school as well. We ask that you add a West Point High School to the bond this year instead of waiting to put it on the bond in the next five years. We are the largest high school, junior high, and elementary in the district. We need all three schools now. As a community, we are concerned for the growth that is already happening and that will continue to happen over the next several years. We are coming to the district because we believe you do care about each of your schools. We would love for each of you to come to our school to not only see how amazing it is, but to see how overcrowded we are. We hope that you will see the need our area has and give us the focus and attention that our students and staff deserve. Thank you.
Marcy Hayes?
My name is Marcy Hayes, and I'm the president of the Booster Organization for the Farmington High School Band Program. I've come to this meeting because our school board is currently in the process of reviewing and modifying the school fee schedules. Today, I'd like to address the fee for student travel. On February first, it was proposed that this fee be raised from one thousand to twelve hundred dollars. After additional feedback, it's clear that there's support to reexamine this proposal. The board is currently considering approval, approving a travel fee of fourteen hundred dollars. This is a much-needed and welcomed adjustment, which is supported by many administrators, parents, teachers, and students. Your willingness to raise this fee, this travel fee, not only shows us that our school board values these types of enriching educational activities, but it also shows us that you have trust in us to make wise choices for our children. Please understand that just because groups will have the ability to take trips that cost the full amount allotted does not mean that they will choose to do so every time. The district has rules in place to assure that trips stay focused on their intent and are fiscally appropriate. Teachers and administrators consider the financial means of families, fundraising opportunities, and community support as they make these decisions. Parents also have a voice as they approve all extended travel trips through a vote which is conducted by their PTA. Only trips that receive eighty percent approval are able to take place, and ultimately, parents always have the choice to choose whether their student participates in any given trip. When school board members are elected, parents are placing their trust in those individuals. When you approve measures like this one, you are putting your trust in us, and we do not take that lightly. As a representative of the Farmington High School community, I want to thank you for your efforts to build that trust and to provide educationally enriching opportunities for our students. Thank you.
Christine Krog?
My name is Christine Krog, and I've been involved in the band program at Davis High and chaired Davis Cup, the yearly marching band competition, for the last four years. I'm here to express my support for raising the trip fees to the currently proposed fourteen hundred dollars. With current inflation and rise in costs, this fee adjustment is needed from the current one thousand dollar cap. The full amount doesn't need to be used every year or for every trip, but rather, it's an option for special occasions. Parents, teachers, administrators, they will all have a voice in approving trips, ensuring only those worthwhile will be approved. Fundraising opportunities are always provided to help offset costs for families that need it. Educational trips are a wonderful way for students to learn, grow, and gain confidence outside of the usual classroom experiences. Twenty-five years ago, when I was a senior in high school, my band took a special trip to Nashville to participate in a music festival. And during this trip, I was able to bond with my fellow classmates and lead as a section leader, and I made some lifelong memories. I would love for students in Davis District to have the option for these types of special educational experiences. I thank you for your time, your thoughtfulness, and your consideration.
Dustin Gibb?
Thank you for the opportunity. My name's Dustin Gibb. I have two kids at Centennial, two kids at Snowhorse, and four-year-old triplets who will be joining the ranks fairly soon. I echo all of the concerns that other parents have expressed about Summit, how they have seen their happy, joyful, ambitious children deteriorate upon starting Summit. The same has happened for my kids, and it's been devastating. And my wife's gonna be sending in an email, and I hope you'll read it. Her name's Jade. Please read it. She talks in more detail about some of the struggles our kids have had. For example, you have to take a PFA and get an eight out of ten. My son studied like crazy. He was as nervous as could be, and he got a seven out of ten. He came home, he studied, he talked to his teacher, and then he went back and got a two out of ten. And then he did it, did some more and got a five out of ten, and then a three. It makes no sense. He thinks he's dumb. He thinks he's a failure. He doesn't want to get out of bed. He's changed from Summit classes to Davis Connect, and it's been really hard to watch as a parent. With such a drastic change that has happened, a fundamental change that has happened in the education of these children and the parents' involvement through Summit, you'd think that there would have been more parent involvement up to this point. I don't think there's been a survey done. Why aren't we asking, are you better off, the same or worse, with Summit? I think overwhelmingly it'd be we're the same or we're worse. And those who would excel would probably excel under any platform of learning. There was a community council meeting last week. I watched the administrators and staff and teachers who were there from Centennial. They were on their phones the whole time. They didn't care. It was really hard to watch as parents got up, ninety-nine percent negative towards Summit, crying about their children. Please make this opt-in. It doesn't work for everyone. It's not one-size-fits-all. Thank you.
Kimberly Morrison?
My name is Kimberly Morrison. Last month, I presented you with data from a parent and student survey regarding Summit. Tonight, I presented you with the rest of that data. The survey now represents the voices of four hundred and sixty parents and two hundred and six students. I have also included statements from medical professionals in Davis County. "The medical community is concerned with the Summit platform as they are regularly seeing patients with anxiety due to Summit." You can read their quotes. Finally, the packet includes statements from teachers in the Davis School District voicing concerns with the Summit platform. They voice concerns anonymously because they feel the statements could jeopardize their employment. I now ask anyone in this room with concerns regarding the Summit platform to please stand.
You need to just speak to us, Ms. Morrison.
I've been asked why I'm doing all of this. After all, statistically, my children-
Before Ms. Morrison goes on, I'd ask all of you to sit down, please. You need to address your comments to ours or I'm gonna ask you to quit.
I am addressing them to you.
No, you're talking to the crowd. So you addressed the board as I indicated when I read the rules. So continue because I'm sure you'll follow the rules from this point.
I've been asked why I'm doing all of this. After all, statistically, my children do well with Summit. But my heart breaks when I see children and their families suffering due to the Summit platform. When a mother tells me her son has decided not to attend college because he feels stupid and inadequate. Or when a friend tells me her daughter cries every day not wanting to go to school. Or when a neighbor tells me her son is suicidal because he has reached his breaking point, failing time and time again with the Summit platform. Or when a girl whom I didn't know was struggling with Summit gives me a hug and says, "Thank you for trying to help me." I cannot remain silent. I used to think we needed to wait until we could determine what the majority of students wanted, but I now know that cannot happen. People have reached their breaking point.
That's your two minutes, Ms. Morrison. Tim? Thank you. Ella Brower?
Hi, my name is Ella Brower. I'm a sixteen-year-old, and I have been in the Davis School District since I was in kindergarten. In elementary school, I was invited into the Spectrum program, and in junior high, I took APs and honor classes, and I was always on the honor roll before my sophomore year at Farmington High School. My sophomore year at Farmington High School was my first year using Summit, and I had a horrible experience. During my sophomore year, I started to fail my classes, even after I stayed after school until 5:00 PM every day to take PFAs, and I was still failing. I constantly felt discouraged because I was trying hard but failing and falling further behind. I began to have severe anxiety every time I went to class. Sometimes I would stay in the bathroom because I was having panic attacks, and I would even find myself throwing up at school because I felt stupid and anxious. I started skipping classes because I didn't see the point in going if I was just going to fail. I didn't feel like I would ever catch up. I didn't feel like the teachers cared if I failed. I couldn't give you one of the names of any of my teachers last year, and I doubt they remember me. One day, my mom and I went to talk to one of my teachers about my failing grades, and my mom asked my teacher if there were math labs that I could attend or get some one-on-one attention from the teacher. The teacher responded that I should use the web links on Summit and that she, my teacher, could be my last resort. Summit made me feel very isolated, and I didn't feel inspired or motivated to learn anymore. My relationship with my family suffered. I felt like my parents were disappointed.
You need to address your comments to ours, or I'm going to ask you to quit.
I am addressing them to you.
No, you're talking to the crowd. So you addressed the board as I indicated when I read the rules. So continue, because I'm sure you'll follow the rules from this point.
I've been asked why I'm doing all of this. After all, statistically, my children do well with Summit. But my heart breaks when I see children and their families suffering due to the Summit platform. When a mother tells me her son has decided not to attend college because he feels stupid and inadequate. Or when a friend tells me her daughter cries every day not wanting to go to school. Or when a neighbor tells me her son is suicidal because he has reached his breaking point, failing time and time again with the Summit platform. Or when a girl whom I didn't know was struggling with Summit gives me a hug and says, "Thank you for trying to help me." I cannot remain silent. I used to think we needed to wait until we could determine what the majority of students wanted, but I now know that cannot happen. People have reached their breaking point.
Tim. Thank you. Ella Brower.
Hi, my name is Ella Brower. I'm a sixteen-year-old, and I have been in the Davis School District since I was in kindergarten. In elementary school, I was invited into the Spectrum program. And in junior high, I took APs and honor classes, and I was always on the honor roll before my sophomore year at Farmington High School. My sophomore year at Farmington High School was my first year using Summit, and I had a horrible experience. During my sophomore year, I started to fail my classes, even after I stayed after school until five PM every day to take PFAs, and I was still failing. I constantly felt discouraged because I was trying hard but failing and falling further behind. I began to have severe anxiety every time I went to class. Sometimes I would stay in the bathroom because I was having panic attacks, and I would even find myself throwing up at school because I felt stupid and anxious. I started skipping classes because I didn't see the point in going if I was just going to fail. I didn't feel like I would ever catch up. I didn't feel like the teachers cared if I failed. I couldn't give you one of the names of any of my teachers last year, and I doubt they remember me. One day, my mom and I went to talk to one of my teachers about my failing grades, and my mom asked my teacher if there were math labs that I could attend or get some one-on-one attention from the teacher. The teacher responded that I should use the web links on Summit and that she, my teacher, could be my last resort. Summit made me feel very isolated, and I didn't feel inspired or motivated to learn anymore. My relationship with my family suffered. I felt like my parents were disappointed in me, and I was extremely disappointed in myself. My parents could see that it wasn't a good learning experiment environment, and we decided to start my junior year at a private school away from Davis School District. I use Canvas, and the teachers teach and care about the students. We are given clear deadlines to meet, and I'm happy to say my GPA is back up on the honor roll. I'm happy that I'm doing so much better, and three of my close friends have just switched out of Farmington High because of Summit. While using Summit, I was extremely depressed, anxious, and discouraged.
Thank you, Ella. Sarah Forbush.
I have five children who have attended Snowhorse, Centennial, and Farmington High School. My two oldest daughters were educated at Davis High School, and I see a great discrepancy with the education that they received compared to what my younger three are receiving in the Summit program. I spoke at Centennial last week about four points that I feel like are huge differences in the academic quality that I am seeing that my children get in preparation for college and for life. But my junior daughter told me after school that she'd like me to share her experience, which I've not shared publicly before. She, in junior high, was very similar to Ella. She took all honors classes, had all As except for one B that was in her accelerated math class. She was a year ahead in math. She took the AP test her ninth-grade year and passed, even though it was during COVID and they didn't have in-class instruction for the last three months. She was extremely bright, wanted to do everything and be involved with everything. Fast forward to Summit, she got behind her first month, and that year, little by little, tried to catch up past content and stay on top of current content. By the term and by second term and third term, she had Fs on her report cards. She was, the light just left her. She told me her, in February when we signed up for her junior classes, she said, "I can't sign up for any honors classes. I'm not smart enough. I can't handle school." This was a girl who had straight As in junior high, all honors classes, AP classes, and accelerated math. Just last week, she told me, she said, "You don't know how hard math is for me." She's doing better this year as a junior, but she's still struggling. Her academic confidence has left her. We pay for, we pay between forty and sixty dollars per week for math tutors when needed, and we can pay for that educational supplement, but we cannot pay for her academic confidence to return. We cannot pay for the missed opportunities that she had. She also had started skipping classes, just like Ella talked about, because she felt like it's irrelevant to me. I'd ask you to please make Summit an opt-in option or remove it from our, from our school district to benefit these children.
Merleine Waldron.
Hi, I'm here to talk about my daughter's experience with Summit. I asked them to write down what they thought. My oldest one said, "Summit gave me a lot of anxiety and made me want to drop out. It made me struggle more with subjects I already struggled with because anything below a C is not good enough. It caused me so much distress that I moved all my Summit classes to Canvas based online. As soon as I moved to a different learning platform, I started passing my classes." My daughter Olivia, she's in tenth grade this year. She said, "Last year, I was a four-point-oh student. Now that I have Summit, I am barely passing, if I'm lucky. It is very depressing to get a seven out of ten on a test and be told you got a zero. It makes me feel like I am stupid. What is the point of going to school if I am teaching myself? Many times, I break down in tears as I'm doing everything I'm supposed to, but a C isn't good enough." Last year, she never would have said a C wasn't, like, last year, there was no, if she got a C on something, she was horrible with it. Now, she's hoping to get that eight, which is a B, so that she can pass these PFAs. Like some of the people said, you can get a two out of ten. She'll get a seven out of ten. She'll get a six out of ten. They never tell her what she's missing, so she doesn't know what she needs to study for. She said that she has many friends who feel the same way. So what has Summit given my children? Increased anxiety, depression, and increased test anxiety. They go and taking these tests, hoping to pass them. What has Summit taught my children? You are stupid if you can't get higher than seventy percent, and your best isn't good enough. Thank you for your time.
Marla Keller.
Hello, I'm here to address Summit. I would like to share a conversation I had with a local pediatrician a couple of weeks ago. She told me that she's been very concerned of children over the twenty-seven years that she's been in practice, and she has been interacting with students regarding the Summit platform since it was rolled out at Farmington. Some students who have been very motivated, organized, and thriving to attend college have been able to manage and even flourish on Summit, but many more students and families have struggled in general. Other students have ended up in her office because of such severe anxiety and depression that some of them even need to go get some counseling. More school accommodations and even medication interventions. As an advocate for children, she said, "I strongly feel the platform is meant for a very particular subset of students, and it should be considered an elective type of curriculum." I also asked if her colleagues were feeling the same way, and one of her colleagues wrote a statement. Could I read what that colleague said? Since I didn't have the conversation with that colleague.
A colleague?
Of hers. I mean, I just read the statement that I had with a person, but the next statement, I did not have, I didn't have that conversation, but I'd like to read it.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay. It's another local pediatrician in her same office. "Ever since Summit began in Farmington High, I have cared for children, child after child, who has suffered from toxic stress related to Summit. Many were A students with no emotional problems. Many have family, have strong family support and good friends, and yet now they're depressed by their failures and overwhelmed by their anxiety, all originating from struggling to learn through Summit. For those who succeeded in it, I am very pleased, but for the great number who suffered under it, I am tremendously sorrowful. Summit needs to be paused and evaluated and at least not be forced upon those who desire a traditional education." Thank you.
That concludes our public comment period. We appreciate those that have taken time to address the board this evening. And we're going to move to our student performance. We appreciate this evening having Leah Johnson with us, Davis School District Storytelling Festival winner. And I'm going to turn some time to Ms. Julie Barlow, and she is going to introduce Leah. Maybe?
First, though, I'm happy to be here, President Robinson, Vice President Stevenson, President Bishop, Superintendent Newey, and Board. I have, first on the docket tonight, Emerson Hammacher, who's a sixth grader at Canyon Creek Elementary. I saw her come in, okay. We want to thank her for her storytelling coach, who's Taryn Litchfield. She's the SEM teacher assistant, and her classroom teacher, Alinda Gleins, and her administrators, who are big supporters of this program. I'm going to put a little plug in for it. If you haven't been to the Storytelling Festival before, it's a lot of fun, and you'll see why when she performs tonight. So we're going to have her perform her story titled "The Final Minute", which she did at the Davis District Storytelling Festival and the Weber State Storytelling Festival yesterday. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Tell us your name again.
Emerson. Are you ready for me to start?
We are ready, Emerson.
Goal! The noise from the crowd burst out all at once. You could feel it rattle your body. It was so strong. Unfortunately, it was for the other team. Worse yet, the final game of the season was now tied one to one with one minute left against our most hated rivals. And even worse still, a tie or a loss would kill any chances of winning our division or making it to the playoffs. In that moment, our team felt about as big as ants, realizing how far this other team had come. Or was it how far we had fallen? After all, two seasons ago, we were two and O against them, outscoring them eleven to one. I mean, I used to think it was pure luck they even tied us three to three last year, but now it didn't feel that way. How could this happen? We were moments away from greatness, and now on the verge of total failure. And that girl, yeah, that one. I haven't forgotten about the time where she tried to trip me in last year's game and got away with it. There she was, jumping and screaming excitedly. Could she rub it in our faces any harder? No. No. No, no, no! I wasn't about to let this happen. I wasn't just going to stand by and watch my team give up after how hard we'd worked all season. We were better than this. I was better than this. If a minute was all we had left, then a minute was all we needed. After settling down, I looked around at my teammates' faces. We knew we had what it took to win this. Now we just had to do it. Placing the ball on the center mark of the field, ready for kickoff, and one last effort. Suddenly, my focus came in. As I looked at the ball, everything around me seemed quiet. Even time seemed to slow down. One one thousand. Two one thousand. Three one thousand. Four one thousand. Boom! The referee's whistle sounded. Without thinking, I dropped the ball back to Veia, and we were off like a pinball machine. Veia zoomed around player after player, and suddenly she stumbled. She nearly lost the ball. Somehow, she found space, just enough space to swing it wide to Winnie on the wing. With a soft touch when he stopped the ball and looked up, a defender was already there. She took a hard touch toward the sideline with the outside of her foot. Immediately, she was cut off by another defender. Swoosh! With one quick movement, Winnie cut back the other direction. She looked for a drop pass to Annabelle, but it was no use. Annabelle was too far behind. Tap, tap, tap. With three quick movements, Winnie was back to the middle of the field. She made a quick crossing pass to an open Maddie at the other wing position. As if wearing Velcro on her shoes, Maddie stopped the ball perfectly and looked up. The defensive pressure was already coming. She found her only option, a drop pass to Abby. Like a game of hot potato, Abby one-touched it to Maggie, who one-touched it to Veia, who then pinged it right back up to me in the middle of the field, just outside of the other team's penalty box. The crowd was on their feet. The coaches were screaming, "Shoot! Take your shot!" I could feel the tension building inside me. I looked up, but there was nowhere to go. I started to panic, but then to my left, I heard Winnie yell, "Emmy, out wide!" Again, my focus came in, and I immediately went into roulette move, just like I had practiced hundreds of times. Stop the ball with my left foot, roll it back to my right foot, shield the ball from the defender by using my body, roll the ball away from me with my right foot, then shift my body weight from my right to my left foot. Then with my foot in an open position and toe pointing straight up, I played the perfect through ball, one step in front of Winnie, ready to take the shot. If you've ever played sports, you know the different sounds or smells that remind you of a practice or a game, or even winning or losing. Well, have you ever heard the satisfying sound of a soccer ball hitting the back of the net? Trust me, it sounds even better when time is just about to run out. Thank you.
It's pretty fun to go watch them at the festival. They're all good little actors. I'm going to also introduce Leah Johnson. Leah is a fifth grader at Davis Connect, and she is going to perform a story titled "Lion Lessons" by John Agui. Her classroom teacher is Emma Ormond, and her storytelling advisors are Ms. Lindsay Clausen and Ms. Cindy Hughey.
Tell us your name again. You're Leah Johnson. Okay, Leah. You ready?
Sure. It's not easy getting your lion diploma. I know. I took lessons. My teacher was a pro. "There are seven steps to becoming a lion," he said, "but first, we must stretch. We did the upward lion, the downward lion, the upside-down lion, the rolling lion, the flying lion, and we shook our manes. Step one was looking fierce. "Watch me," said the lion. "You bare your claws, gnash your teeth, and show your fangs." I tried out my three most frightening poses. The lion was not impressed. Step two was roaring. "It's simple," said the lion. "You take a deep breath, and you [roar] as loud as you can into the microphone." I took a deep breath and [roar] as loud as I could. "Needs work," said the lion. Step three was choosing what to eat. The lion showed me the menu. Fresh today, free-range muskrat, wombats, organic iguana. Oh, you can eat antelope? "Are there any specials?" I asked. "You know, like spaghetti." The lion growled. "We don't eat spaghetti." Step four was prowling around. We crept through the woods, trying to be invisible. We hid in the bushes. "I can see your toe," said the lion. We hid behind trees. "Your toe," said the lion. "I can still see it." Step five was sprinting. "See that tree?" said the lion. I looked around. "You mean the little one here?" "No," said the lion. "I mean the big one on that faraway hill. I'll meet you there in five minutes." It took me an hour. "You need to hit the gym," said the lion. Step six was pouncing. "It's simple," said the lion. "You get a running start, and you jump on that lady. But I'll scare her to death." "Uh, that's the idea," said the lion. So, I got a running start, and I pounced! "What a cute little kitty cat," said the lady. "Are you lost?" "Meow," I said. The lion checked my scores. "This is not very promising." Step seven was looking out for your friends. Right away, I spotted a kitten. "Friend or foe?" said the lion. "That's easy," I said. "Friend." "What about that dog?" I let out a ferocious [roar]. I bared my claws, gnashed my teeth, pawed the ground, shook my mane, and then I sprinted across the field as fast as I could. Exactly like, oh, sorry, well, you know, a lion! "Bravo," said the lion. "And that's how I got my diploma. I'm very proud of it. But now, the neighborhood cats won't leave me alone." Thank you.
So Emerson and Leah, we'd like to invite the two young ladies to come up, and also, if you would, if you have your parents here or anybody that's with you, please have them come up with you, and you can introduce your, those that are with you. Mr. Eckersley, would you go down and represent the board, please? So Emerson and Leah, we've got plaques that we're going to be bringing you to your school for your presentation this evening. Emerson, would you introduce who's with you tonight?
He's a doctor for my children's.
Leah, would you introduce?
This is my mom, and she's a hairdresser.
This is my mom, and she's a hairdresser.
And her little lion brothers.
Yeah.
Do you want your brothers in the picture?
Sure.
See a solo bay. They're hiding.
Should we go? Let's take Emerson first, and then Leah will get you.
Okay. There we go.
I should tell you, this cute family has two sets of twin. So the sisters are in fifth grade at Davis Connect, and then they're lovely little brothers. Okay, everybody look at me? Thanks, everyone. Oh, sorry. We're gonna stay right here.
Thank you very much. We're gonna move to our board recognition this evening. We're gonna ask Superintendent Newey, if he would, to present.
President, Board, I'll do that from right here. I'd like Mr. Johns Zerbakan to come on up, please. Board, we... One of the things that's a real pleasure is working with the board, and I enjoy my time, in particular, in our board agenda planning meetings. And you know, as well as I do, we go through board recognition. We feel it a great honor in the district to have outstanding people that service kids every single day and do their very best to make this district great for our students. And one of the things that we've also tried to maintain is, you know, there's kind of a bit of a line between, you know, what our job is and necessarily what's above and beyond our job. And, you know, we have, many of us have, all of us have big jobs to do, and Mr. Zerbakan has a lot to do, and we expect him to do it. And he does a great job of it. He has some of the hardest assignments in the superintendency, some of the most volumous in terms of number of students. He maintains multiple grant programs for us, oversees all of our grants, which is just an incredible amount of tedious work. And those are just part of his assignments. Two years ago, Board, as you know, we went into a full dismissal of school due to COVID. And at that time, we were able to turn around and get a delivery of learning to our households. And every night from that point forward, Mr. Zerbakan had to take a call from the Health Department, take the numbers of COVID cases, calculate where we were at, what the cases meant, define that, and then turn it around and put out that information every single night. And he's done that, and we expected him to do it, but we didn't expect COVID to hit. He has done that without even the slightest utterance of complaint. And that's only part of what he's dealt with with that. You know, as well as I do, the dealing with COVID on every front in our society has become one of the most divisive, tenuous struggles we have. It continues to be. And he's never once fallen into that. He's just come, and, you know, there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of back and forth, what to do, what not to do, how are we going to do it? And every time, Mr. Zerbakan has handled that with grace and class and with the utmost efficiency. And for that, Board, we appreciate his extra work, the time he's spent away from his family, and just all he's done. I love John, and he is certainly deserving of this honor. So with that, Mr. Zerbakan.
Thank God my wife's not here, because she would go, "Do not bring that attitude home." It's been a pleasure to serve the district. It's been, you know, Superintendent, thank you for those kind words. It's, you know, working at Davis School District, you just do, as we all do. Parents, Board, teachers, staff, we do what we have to do. It's just getting job done, and it's just what we do day after day. And I think that's the beauty of this district, is even though oftentimes we'll disagree, we'll have arguments, we'll try to find some common ground. No matter what happens, in the end, we all recognize in each other we're doing the best that we can. And we intend tomorrow to be even better than we are today. And I think that's the thing that is so enriching about this community. And, you know, again, it's just doing our job, just like you guys. You know, you took, you guys know how the last two years have been, and I applaud you guys for the fact that we went through it together, and we did what we all believed individually and collectively is best for our kids. So I thank you for that. I do have to, while I can't bring this attitude home, I was surprised tonight, because normally, all of a sudden, I get a text from, "Your daughter's here." And I'm like, "What?" Oh, so actually, my daughter Ellie, who's a third-year med student at the U, came over, and her boyfriend Max Keller, who is a science teacher at Millcreek Junior High. So he's in the right profession. I couldn't convince my daughter. So I just wanted to thank those two for coming, and thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Calm during the COVID storm, calm during the DOJ. And when John and I met as leadership to try to decide who we wanted to recognize this month in board meeting, it was John. We appreciate him. First one out, and the first one in the parking lot in the morning, and usually the last one out. He is an incredible person, and we appreciate all he does. I don't think there's been a parent there, one of my constituents, I've ever sent to John, but he hasn't agreed to talk to them, and they all come back. He is such a nice guy and intelligent. I think, I think, I think that was trying to get a picture here.
Can we have this daughter? Yeah, that's... Up to you guys.
Board, let's move to our information items. Board member reports, committee reports, I should say. Should we begin with Ms. Stevenson with the Foundation, please?
Okay, time for a February report of Foundation. We just met last Friday night as the Foundation and the Board, and always nice to meet with that group of patrons and sponsors. And I recognize them and give my appreciation to them, as well as Jody and all of her staff for all that they do for us. We were delighted to attend, last week, the Heidi Martin Mighty Heart Educator Excellence Award every year when I announce that. That just seems to be getting a longer and longer name of that award, but it is an amazing award, and many of you know by now how that came about. But we have a couple that remain anonymous that donate that $10,000 every year. And that's incredible right there. But this year, it went to a teacher at Reading Elementary, Courtney Immler. Is that how you say her name?
Immler.
Scott Hughes is the principal there, and this is what he says about Courtney. Courtney anticipates where students may need additional support. She's a teacher who has a backup plan for her backup plans. "We are so fortunate to have phenomenal teachers who care about our students." We do thank our donors again, as they do remain anonymous. We'd like to invite all of you, the Board and all, to Cast a Spell on Hunger event on March 5th at Young Mazda in Ogden from 11:00 to 1:00. Our great partners, the Young Group, continually support education, and we look forward to another community event with them on this Saturday at 11 o'clock. Unified Sports was introduced to us a couple months ago, I think, here in our Board. It is off to a great start, and on March 16th at Clearfield High School, 10 o'clock, we'll have a parade of the athletes and the opening ceremonies and the games to follow. It should be an incredible event. I'm excited to be a part of that. A big thank you to Murdoch Automotive Group, as they donated $20,000 toward that initiative. February 3rd, we had ribbon cutting and grant opening for the Mindful Center at Clearfield High School. The incredible and special thing about that was that was a student-led initiative. To get that, they raised $66,000 to construct and make that happen. They were concerned about the mental health of their peers. What a day to see the impact of the youth and partnership in that program. Last, the Foundation Annual Report has been provided. The district will have copies if you want one. I've passed them out to the Board. Take time to look through that and see all the incredible things that happened this last year. Our partners and community definitely rallied around our initiatives and our students. We live in such a great and wonderful community that invests, engages, and celebrates education. The Foundation would also like to thank us, the Board of Education, and I'll pass that on to all of you for your support and your leadership. They always put together a nice, a nice report for us to look at. So once again, thanks to Jody and her team, and for all of our sponsors in the Foundation. And remember, all of you can always donate to the Foundation. We would welcome it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Ms. Gerard, USBA?
Thank you. Just wanted to remind you that our USBA region meetings will be held this month, so you should have received a copy of that in the mail. The meeting that we've been asked to attend will be held March 10th at 6:00 PM right here in our auditorium here. But if you can't attend that night, well, we'll have dinner at our meeting. And, but if you can't attend that region meeting, you're welcome to attend any of the region meetings that might be more convenient to you. We will be talking about the legislative session. The legislative session will end this Friday, and I wanted to thank all of you who were able to attend the Legislative Day on the Hill on the 22nd. It was a great day, and we were able to talk to many of our legislators whom we appreciate. And we also got to see a great performance by a group in our district, and I want to give a shout out to them, and a great big thank you to Shoreline Junior High. Their performance at the Capitol was amazing, and we really enjoyed it, and they represented us well. And I wanted to thank Shanda Stanger for helping arrange that, and thank their director, Amy Young, from Shoreline, and their great principal, TJ Barker, and those amazing students. It was a great performance, so we appreciate them doing that for us. And I wanted to say thank you to all who have reached out during the session to their legislators and talked to them about bills that you felt strongly about. And we will talk more about that at our region meetings. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Gerard. I'm gonna give just a couple comments regarding our March 15th workshop. We are at that workshop, planning on discussing the Summit Learning Platform, and we will follow this process. So those of you that are in attendance here or that might be watching the livestream can have an idea of what that night will look like. The meeting will be conducted as all our board meetings are conducted with Board leadership presiding. Each board member, we've asked each board member, or we'll ask each board member, to take an opportunity during that evening to present information they received from their constituents. There'll be no public participation at this workshop, so we would ask our patrons to email their board member, if you haven't already, on any comments you have regarding the summit program. And all of us as board members will have a chance to share however many comments that we have that evening. Our Teaching and Learning Director, Ms. Belinda Cook, will coordinate the responses to the comments by either her or other staff members regarding the information that we present or that are presented by the board members. During that evening, our time will also allow us as board members and administration to talk about any other questions that we might, as board members, have regarding the summit program. So we anticipate at this time that will be our one and only agenda item. That meeting will start again at 4:00 on Tuesday, March 15th, and as is the format in the past, we will certainly post that so the public is reminded of when that meeting will start, and again, the agenda. Questions from any board members? Good. Thank you. So we're gonna turn some time now to Superintendent Newey for this...
Sorry, Mr. Robinson. So will the goal be to just have a discussion, or will the goal be to have a timeline for a decision? Or what will the goal of the discussion be?
The goal of the discussion right now is to have a discussion regarding the things that we as board members have presented. And I think during the process of the evening, we'll determine, you know, ultimately, as we have that discussion and we discuss with our administration any, again, the concerns that we hear, the concerns that we have, and get feedback from them. I think the evening itself will lead to whatever culmination of that evening brings. What's that?
With the administration working with us, we can bring to them.
That make sense? Superintendent Newey?
Thank you, President, Board. Wanted, in following the agenda, we'll start with Dr. Toon. Wanted to just take just a moment and preface his remarks in terms of, a couple meetings ago, and as well as in several of the planning meetings and so forth we've had, we've expressed, from an administrative point of view, as well as from the Board, how incredibly difficult the year and the teaching job has been on our educators throughout the system. It's, as we honored Mr. Zerbakan and with COVID and the variant being with us and kids missing school, and then maybe some reassimilation of cold and flu season, as well as all the pressures on everyone, it has been a difficult time for our teachers and educators throughout the system. And with that, the Board has charged us, and we've expressed the same concern about trying to find any respite for teachers. to find any respite for teachers and educators, our aides, our, all of our personnel that support education in this district, to try to gain some ground whenever we could. We appreciate the Board's financial nod to our educators. But with that, we've also been charged to try to find one of the most valuable things, and that is extra time for our educators to try to get to a point where they feel like they can get on top of what they're doing with students, what they're doing in their classrooms and throughout the school. So with that, Dr. Toon?
Thank you, Superintendent Newey, Board President Robison, Vice President Stevenson, and Board Members. In working on these proposals for time for teachers, we visited with school administrators, district administrators, and school administrators have visited with key teachers to solicit feedback on what will be the most impactful. And I don't, we don't need to restate the great concern that Superintendent Newey outlined, but teaching is the greatest profession on the earth. I truly believe that with all my heart, and I respect and love our teachers, and they've had, what many of you have heard, and we have heard as well, one of the hardest years in their careers. And we intend not to solve all of the problems, but to provide a little bit of relief in this. We recognize that this will, at the end of the day, likely not feel entirely sufficient, but we feel like it's a good balancing act between the fact that we do our best work when we're in our schools with students. And we have a professional obligation to provide high-quality training and assessments and collaborative opportunities for teachers. So that's a competing priority with the challenges that we're facing right now in our schools. And so as we balance that out, we feel like this is a, this proposal that's before you today is a, is kind of a moderation and a way of meeting the need and also maintaining the priorities that we have. So the draft that was in your Board packet has three adjustments that are proposed, and I'll kind of go a little bit out of order. I'll follow up on the first listed adjustment last because I think it'll solicit the most discussion. We have until the remaining, throughout the remaining school year, we have early-out Fridays for elementary schools and late-start Wednesdays for secondary schools as scheduled. We're going to be working with our secondary and elementary school administrators to prioritize and consolidate the professional learning communities, dated team meetings and trainings, faculty meetings that are currently being held during that professional time. That's professional time, and so we have appropriately been using that time for some of those opportunities. We're going to ask our school administrators to work to make the first and third week, Wednesday or Friday, depending on how they fall, essentially meeting free for teachers so that they can have access to that time to do the preparation that they need to help students catch up, to get their head above water, basically, with all the work that's come onto their plates this year. And so that would be two existing late-start and early-out periods per month for the rest of the year. Spring break falls in there, so it messes with it, but really the first and the third are the free, meeting-free times that we have. We don't know that we'll be able to, we don't necessarily feel that that's going to be a permanent change. None of these really will be permanent changes, but rather just a way to kind of reset and assess where we are. We'll be looking with district department directors, school directors, and school principals to identify the professional learning activities and assessments that are not absolutely necessary. We want to go with caution in that we don't feel like we've been doing anything that has been unimportant to date, but we also recognize that in the balance of priorities, some things will fall below the priority level and some things will stay above. We intend to continue to maintain some of those priority opportunities, but also in focusing on the priorities, maybe yield some time and some mental space and focus for our teachers as we look at assessments and trainings. The biggest adjustment that will affect the students the most, I think, is the addition of three proposed early-out days. Would be a two-hour early dismissal across all of our schools. We've worked with our Transportation Department and our Nutrition Department and all the other auxiliary services that will be affected by this change, thanks to Mr. Carter and his support and his teams, to work out a plan by which high schools would end two hours early, and we'd run the high school buses, and junior highs would end two hours early, and we'd run the junior high buses, and elementaries would end two hours early, and we'd run the elementary buses. Initially, we intended to have two of those days each month, with one of those weeks being on a spring break, so three days. As we visited with our teachers, the day in May became a little bit unnecessary in that May is kind of on the end, things are kind of winding down, and so we felt like the priority is now. So we put two of those early-out days in March and one in April, and there's also that spring break, so it'll be two, basically, opportunities for teachers to reset this month and next. And so it's, that's what we'll be asking the Board to take a look at later on the agenda, but I just wanted to kind of go through the details of that.
So Board, as we look at this, as Dr. Toon just mentioned, we will vote on this as a business item because it is a calendar adjustment. So any questions that you might have for Dr. Toon? Ms. Tanner?
Yeah, Dr. Toon, did you, did your committee or group take a look at doing just a full day at all, and what were the pros and cons of that as you weighed it out?
Yes, we did. That was the first proposal on the table, was to look at one remote day per month. And as we looked at that, balancing the needs of families in the community and the challenges of having a full-day dismissal, as well as the notion that when we're on our school calendar, we're required to have at least four hours of direct instruction per school day. So we would have to prepare for and deliver that remote instruction on the day that the students were in their remote learning environments. And so we felt that the additional preparation time that that would require for teachers would kind of offset the gift of time that they would be receiving, and it would kind of counteract that benefit. So the late start allows us to have the full school day instruction, and teachers don't necessarily need to prepare student activities or experiences while they're dismissed for those two hours.
Thank you. And I know this will be hard on parents that now have their children getting early out for three extra days, but I feel it's worth the trade-off to be able to give our teachers some relief, because I've been giving, getting lots and lots of feedback from teachers of the overwhelming burden that is being placed upon them at this time, so I thank you for this.
Thank you. And, you know, to reiterate, you know, this is not a reflection of our priority in terms of, we're not trying to find ways to have less school. Where, that wouldn't even be on the list of priorities. We do, like I said, we do the best work when students and teachers are working side-by-side. And so this is a stopgap, and it's a temporary measure to meet a critical need.
Any other thoughts, questions? Ms. Stevenson?
Can I address the one sentence that said, "existing late start and early-out days", where it says, "School directors will work with principals to prioritize and consolidate faculty meetings, collaborative meetings, and other meetings typically held during this time"? So I would like to have it said, or to just relay what I feel about it, is school directors will not take these three extra times to hold these three extra early-out days to add additional meetings or whatever. But I love that we're asking them to maybe consolidate the other meetings that they have, but, boy, I'd hate to give them three early-out days and they get filled up with other trainings and faculty meetings.
Our intent on those three early-out days is that they be meeting three days for teachers.
Perfect.
To direct their time however they see fit in their professional obligations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Toon. Oh, excuse me, Ms. Phipps?
Yeah, I'm going to also express, I think it's a great thing, but I am concerned because of an adopted calendar and people making plans, that this, I'm concerned about children being left unattended because this wasn't a planned-for thing. And I hope that we can look at having community councils talk about some solutions. I don't know whether there's after-school programs or something that can be looked at so that people that had not plans and haven't got another arrangement can have their children taken care of in a safe environment.
Thank you. I do know that our after-school, our existing after-school programs will remain in effect on those three days.
Ms. Mumford?
Dr. Toon, could you just speak quickly? What's the notification intention after tonight's meeting?
Pending Board approval.
Pending Board approval.
We'll be working with our Community Relations Department and our school principals. Likely the messaging will flow through the school principals to communicate to their community that these three days will be early out.
Right. Yeah, I think just as long as we can be prompt with that, we're looking at kind of a three-week window before that hits families, and so we want to give them as much notice as possible.
Excellent, thank you.
Ms. Gerard?
I've got the same concerns also, but thank, want to thank you for working on this. I know that our teachers are going to be excited about this and that they, they do need some relief, because I've been getting the same feedback from our teachers, but I was concerned also for our parents who are not expecting these early outs. So I agree that getting the word out properly will be helpful, but I appreciate the work that's been done on this, and we'll show our teachers how much we appreciate them, how grateful we are for what they have done.
Thank you.
In a rough couple of years, for our teachers, but also for our families.
Trevor? You're going to get out of school. Well, we would be very impressed if you stayed, but you'll have to choose. Anything else, Superintendent, on that?
Nope.
Dr. Toon, thank you very much. Let's move to administrative appointments, or turn the time to Superintendent Newey.
Thank you, President. Board. This is one of our most anticipated and looked forward to nights. We are so grateful for the people we have in this district to work with, and particularly our Administration tonight in terms of new appointments. With that, we've had our Administrate, new administrators in queue since six. Appreciate Dr. Toon. So it's been a little long stay for them, but we appreciate them staying with us. So without further ado, we want to give the Board an opportunity to meet each one of our administrators briefly. And so with that, we appreciate Mr. Timothy Ward, who always does such a great job for us here tonight, setting all of this up. And we're going to just go by categories, and I'll introduce each category, and then Dr. Toon and Timothy has them queued up to go right into a short introduction. So with that, Board, we'll start with our district administrators, starting with Ms. Tiffany Midgley.
No?
Hello, I'm Tiffany Midgley, and I'm serving as a Director of Special Education. I've been an educator for about 28 years with experience in early childhood, elementary, and secondary education. I am really looking forward to continuing my support for Davis School District students, families, and educators in this new role. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Brian Hunt, and I'm honored to serve as the next Director for Career and Technical Education for the Davis School District. I'm currently the Administrator for our new CTE Center, the Davis Catalyst Center. Thank you for making the Catalyst possible. Prior to my role here at the Catalyst, I was the Principal at Northridge High School and North Davis Junior High. I also served as an Assistant Principal at those two schools. I wish my wife, Laura, in Fort Schilling, could be here tonight, but my wife is prom dress shopping with our late-in-high senior. Thanks.
With that, we'll move to our new Administrator of the Catalyst Center, Dr. Tyler Paul.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tyler Paul. I am excited to serve as the Administrator of the Catalyst. As to this assignment, I was a CTE teacher at North Davis Junior High, and as a Principal at Syracuse Junior High, North Davis Junior High, and Northridge High School, and most recently have served as Principal of North Davis Junior High. I have my four kids with me. So my oldest, Taylee, she's a fifth grader at South Elementary, Riley's a second grader, Marley is in preschool, and Griffey is our caboose, also in preschool. My wife is a high school theater teacher, and her show opens this week, so she is at rehearsal, but my kids drew a picture of her.
Thank you, Dr. Paul. Next, we'll move to our secondary principals, and we'll begin with Mr. Adam Thompson.
Hello, my name is Adam Thompson. I am the, going to be the Fairfield Junior High Principal next year. I've had 20 years in education, starting as a teacher at Sunset Junior High, teaching science, and then Syracuse High, I taught biology, and I've been Administrator for about the past 12 years in elementary, junior high, and the high school level. I have with me my family, too. This is my wife, Erin Thompson. She's a math teacher in the Davis School District as well. I have with me my three boys. This is Emmett, he's a sophomore at Syracuse High. This is Tommy, he's the eighth grader. And then I have one more son right here, and his name is Henry, and he is finishing up the sixth grade. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jo Richens. This is my 22nd year in education. I have been a teacher, a counselor, and I am currently the Assistant Principal at Northridge High School. This is my amazing husband, Shane, who is the best supporter and supports me in everything that I do. I am super excited that I have been named the Principal of Mueller Park Junior High.
Hi, I am Mercy Rossmango, and I'm going to be the new Principal at Centennial Junior High in the fall. This is my 20th year in the Davis School District. I taught 13 years teaching English at Sunset Junior High, and then three years teaching English at Northridge. I was an intern at Farmington High School and have spent the last three years there at Farmington High School as the Assistant Principal. This is my husband, John. We've been married for 32 years. We have three grown kids and a little grandbaby that lives in Texas. I'm super excited for this next opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Rossmango. Next, we'll move to our elementary principals and start with Mr. Mike Archibald.
Excellent. Good evening. My name's Mike Archibald. I'm going to be the Principal at Antelope Elementary. This is my 14th year in Davis School District. I spent seven years as a junior high science teacher at both Northlake and Junior High and Caseville Junior High. In the past seven years, I've been an Assistant Principal at the secondary level and have enjoyed every minute of that. These are two of my boys. This is Jerry over here, and this is Ethan over here. I have a third one, Wyatt, who's three years old, but he gave up on the Board meeting and is watching Curious George upstairs, so you'll have to catch him another time. Anyways, we're going to do awesome things at Antelope Elementary, and I look forward to leading out there.
Good evening, Board Members. Superintendent Newey. Many of you might know me already a little bit. My name is Scott Rogers. I just, gosh, I've had 30 years in education as a counselor and principal, and then the last 20 as a Superintendent. And my wife just informed me this year that 20 years as a Superintendent is enough for anybody. So I am very excited about joining the team at Bluff Ridge Elementary. And the goal was always, in my last, oh, seven or eight years, to get back to working more closely with students and teachers. And gosh, after those two elementary students, females, gave those dramatic readings, I mean, that's where the magic happens, in the classroom with students. So I'm just very excited to be joining the Davis team, and thank you for this opportunity.
Hello. You're good. Hello, my name is Jenny Scow, and I will be the Principal next year at Whitesides Elementary. I started my education career teaching sixth grade in Granite School District, and then I moved on to Davis School District, also teaching sixth grade there. I have taught special education at a middle school in Colorado, and then I got to come back to Davis School District to be a special ed- back to Davis School District to be a special education teacher at Syracuse Elementary. I've also taught some sixth grade at Syracuse Elementary too. Here with me tonight, I have my husband Jeff, I have my son Isaiah, and I have another son. Most recently, I've had the opportunity to work as an administrative intern at Meadowbrook Elementary and also most recently at Foxborough Elementary. I'm just super excited about the upcoming year and I'm very thankful for the opportunity.
My name is Sarah Burt. I, I am excited to be the Principal at Hillfield Elementary next year. And I started my education career as a teacher in a Title I school and spent the next seven years in several different schools and districts, teaching primarily first grades. Sorry, those are my littles. We, I, four years ago, accepted a position as administrative intern in Davis School District and, oh, sorry Tiffany, sorry. And I am excited for this opportunity. I just wanna introduce my family really quick. This is my wonderful husband Zach and my daughter Claire and my son Jackson. And then I have my lovely oldest daughter Isabel, who is helping with our rambunctious twins who are almost two. Thank you so much for this opportunity, I appreciate it.
Wow.
My name is Janice Bukey and it is such a privilege to be joining the Davis School District and especially to be appointed as the Principal at Case Creek Elementary. I am currently a Principal at Newbridge STEM School in Ogden School District. This is my eighth year as an elementary principal and my 20th year as an educator in Utah, serving in multiple roles. My husband and I moved to Davis County two years ago and since then, I just, in addition to wanting to be closer to family, I've just found this desire to support the social and the academic growth of the children in my community. And so it's an honor to be joining the highly skilled staff at Case Creek and to partner with our families and just helping our students become their best selves. So, I really want to thank all of you for this wonderful opportunity.
Is this working? Okay, perfect, thank you. I'm happy to be here. My name is Natalie Vincent and I will be the new Principal at Mountain View Elementary next year. I am really excited for this opportunity. I started my career in Davis School District in 2002, teaching at West Clinton Elementary and then at Sand Springs Elementary's in the second, third, and fourth grades. I most recently have been working as the administrative intern at South Weber Elementary for the last three years. I am here with my three children. This is my son Jackson, he's an 11th grader at Clearfield High. And my daughter Taylee, who is a fifth grader at West Point Elementary. And my son Riker is an eighth grader at West Point Junior High. My husband is currently serving as Mayor of our city and he is a City Council and he is the best supporter I could ask for. Thank you for this opportunity.
My name is Heidi Short and I started my career at Davis School District 20 years ago as the SEM teacher at Creekside Elementary and fell in love with it. From that, I went on and got my Master's Degree in Education, in elementary education and taught at Morgan Elementary, sixth grade for 10 years, and then taught at Nolton for two years. And the past seven years, I have been an intern at many different schools. I've been at Morgan and Nolton, Peace Layton, Odyssey, and Bountiful and have enjoyed every minute of my, my time there. I am assigned to go to Orchard Elementary in North Salt Lake and I am thrilled to be, to have this opportunity. So, thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Megan Fairborn. I am excited to be the Assistant Principal, or no, no, I'm going to be the Principal at Tolman Elementary. I apologize, it still has a new ring to it, so I am not quite used to it yet. I started teaching 20 years ago, sixth grade in Salt Lake School District. Then I, the next year, I taught sixth grade at Lakeside Elementary here in Davis School District. I then returned to my home state of Louisiana and taught there in a Title I school in Bossier City, Louisiana, junior high math. And then returned back to Utah, Davis County, couldn't stay away. Taught 10 years at Syracuse Junior High, math. And for the past five years, I've been an elementary intern at Washington Elementary, Reading Elementary, and I just loved Lakeside so much, I came back and, and there currently. My husband is with my three children. I'm not as brave as Tyler and Sarah to have my kindergartner, my fourth grader and my sixth grader here on screen, but they all are super excited. They're a little nervous because as soon as I told them that I was gonna be the Principal, the first question out of their mouth was, are we gonna have to go to school with you now, Mom? And I just had to assure them, no, you can stay where you're at, but we're all super excited and I appreciate this opportunity.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent. My name's Chad Sanders and I've been appointed as the Principal of Wasatch Elementary for next school year and I am thrilled, I'm excited. I have taught fifth and sixth grade here in, in Davis School District and I have, I am and have been the administrative intern at Lincoln Elementary twice, in two different rotations. And in between that, I was an elementary principal in the Murray School District. So, I am, I am excited to get to know the, the team at Wasatch and, and work with them to accomplish some new and amazing things, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Next, we'll move, Board, to the secondary, new secondary Assistant Principal assignments and start with Ms. Miley Zackman.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. I will be serving as an Assistant Principal at Farmington High School. Prior to Farmington High School, I was a science teacher at Davis High School for the majority of my career, where I also coached softball and spent time as the Athletic Director. My administrative career started at Northridge High School as the intern there and has been, the last two years, I've been at Northlake and Junior High as an Assistant Principal and I'm excited for this next opportunity, so thank you.
Hi, my name is Monica Ramos Carlsen. I'm an Assistant Principal at Centennial Junior and I'm very excited to serve the families, students, and staff at Northridge High School. I have also previously served as an Assistant Principal at Sunset Junior High and as an Associate Director in Granite School District. I'm really happy to be back in Davis and just wanna take a second to introduce my kiddos, my babies. This is Nora. She is a high schooler in Salt Lake County. And my son Nico, who is a fifth grader in Salt Lake County as well. And my husband Eric is at parent teacher conferences tonight at his school where he teaches, so couldn't make it, but we're all really excited and I appreciate the opportunity.
Hi, I'm Hayden Call. I am Assistant Principal at North Davis Junior High and I've been in education for 15 years. I taught for 10 years, from AP Government to US History to Ceramics. I did, I did history art and Spanish. And I've been an administrator for five years and I'm excited to be the new Assistant Principal at Beaumont High School. This is my family. And I have four kiddos and my wife was a CTE teacher in, in the district. She taught at Woods Cross High School and Mill Creek Junior High and that's where we met, so anyway, thanks, everybody.
My name is Kevin Hargraves and thank you for having me. I'm currently an Assistant Principal at Carol M. Johnston Middle School in North Las Vegas, Nevada, and I am very excited and for the opportunity to be an Assistant Principal at Farmington Junior High School next school year. I've had a wonderful career so far here in Las Vegas for 10 years as a teacher, an instructional coach, a Dean of Students, and an Assistant Principal. My family's not here tonight, they're at a football practice that my son didn't want to miss, so not gonna be with us this evening, but my wife Jamie is a fourth grade teacher here in Las Vegas, hopes to continue to teach in Utah. And we have a 10-year-old son, his name is William, finishing fifth grade, going into sixth grade, and it's all about sports for him right now, but we're really thankful to be coming home. We have been away, we've lived in England and Las Vegas for 12 years. I grew up in South Jordan, graduated from Bingham High School. My wife grew up in Sandy and graduated from Brighton High School and we just are really grateful to be able to be coming home and for the, bringing the experiences and background I've had to support the staff and the students and the families at Farmington Junior High School. And just wanna thank you all for the opportunity and it's a privilege and thank you again.
Hi, my name is Eric Castro. I was a Spanish teacher at Mill Creek Junior High for five years. I'm now in my first year as an administrative intern at Clearfield High School and next year, I'm going to be an Assistant Principal at North Davis Junior High. This is my wife Tanya, this is my oldest daughter Kennedy, she's a fourth grader at Columbia Elementary School. This is my six-year-old Zoe, she is a kindergartner at Columbia Elementary School. And this is Rockwell, who is two. We're really excited for the new opportunity to be at North Davis Junior High and we can't wait to get there. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jordan Liu. I have the honor of accepting a position at Centennial Junior High as Assistant Principal next year. Very excited. I started my career in Davis School District at Beaumont, where I taught English. I coached football there and baseball there, loved it. When Farmington High opened up, went over there, taught English, did the same. Currently, I'm at Bountiful High as an intern and I've loved my time at Bountiful as well. Tonight, I have with me my lovely wife. We'll get to tell you all about her in a minute. We have three children, a seven-year-old daughter named Journey and twin boys, Roman and Deacon, who are four, that decided that hot tubbing at Grandma and Grandpa's house was way more fun than sitting on the couch with us. I'd like to say hello to my mom and dad watching this or tuning in from St. George and also to my mother and father-in-law who are tuning in to support me this fine evening as well. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Katie Frederickson. I am currently an intern at Beaumont High School. I have worked at Davis High as a teacher, Legacy Junior and Centerville Junior, and also as an ESOL adult ed teacher. Next year, I will be at Fairfield Junior High. And this is my husband Shane Frederickson, well, obviously Frederickson. Anyway, he's been a great support and we're excited for this next step.
Hi, I'm Pat Lemus. I'm gonna be the new Assistant Principal at Northlake and Junior High. Right now, I am the Advent Intern at Syracuse High School. I'm really excited to take this new position and move on to Northlake next year. With me tonight is my husband Joe, who is an instructor at Weaver State University and my adult children are here, but they're not on camera. But I just wanna thank them for all their support and my colleagues who, who have just been awesome. So, I'm excited for the future.
Greetings, distinguished School Board members and those in the audience. I'm super excited and thankful to be here this evening. My name is Elliot Tupia and my wife's name is Heather and my son's name is Eli. They're preoccupied getting ready for bed at the moment. Currently, I'm at Woods Cross High School as an assistant intern. Love it there, it's been a great learning experience. Previous to Woods Cross High School, I was in the Granite and Jordan School Districts as a secondary business education teacher as well as a coach. I will be accepting a new assignment at Mueller Park Junior High School as an Assistant Principal. Can convey and articulate how grateful I am for the opportunity and the ability to impact lives of the students in that area as well as further my career in Davis School District. It's been super awesome and I'm loving it and I'm thankful, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tupia.
Jenny Talbot. And I will be the Bountiful, I'll be an intern at Bountiful High School. So, I've taught for 19 years. I started teaching social studies at Jordan School District and then found my home here in Davis School District. I've taught at four different schools and I've loved each and every one. Eight years ago, I was also asked to be a gear-up site coordinator, where I was able to help prepare kids for college. And that really kind of put me on this course, where I'm excited to continue that journey over at Bountiful High School. These are, this is my family, so the, the boys in the back, you wanna wave? They are fourth graders at South Weber Elementary. And this is our little kindergartner at South Weber Elementary, who is sad to see Mrs. Vincent go. And this is my amazing husband, who without it, I couldn't do it. He's my, he's my rock and so I'm excited to pursue this journey.
Board, we're, thank Dr. Talbot for starting us off. These are the elementary, or no, these are the secondary administrative interns. So, Mr. Peoples is next.
Hey, guys. My name is John Peoples. I'll be doing an intern Assistant Principal at Clearfield High School in the coming year. I'm originally from Birmingham, Alabama, and I spent most of my adolescent years at Palm Springs and that's where I was discovered with, by Kyle Woodyham. I've got a football scholarship out this way. From there, the plan was to coach, follow his lead, but fate intervened a little bit and I got my first teaching job in Plains City, Utah, and that's where I truly discovered the love of education. I've been teaching for 25 years, business and marketing classes, but I'm excited to take on this next chapter in my life. Before I sign off, I wanna introduce my family to you guys. This is my lovely wife of 20 years, Tiffany. Hi. I have my, my oldest daughter, she's Amalia, she's a freshman at Disney University, she's not here with us. John Tay is a junior at Bingham High School and I got twins also, we got a lot of twins out there. I got twins also, boy and a girl, Ganzella and Stacey Bell, they're in eighth grade. And on that note, I look forward to meeting you all and I'll see you all soon. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mackenzie Liu and I have accepted the position as the Administrative Intern at Davis High School next year. I started my education career here in Davis District and I taught fifth grade at Burton Elementary School. I am currently the Administrative Intern the last three years at Holbrook and Taylor Elementary School. I'm excited to start this next adventure in secondary and I'm excited to join that administrative team and become a Davis Dart. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Yvette Ashton and I'm sitting here with my husband Chris Ashton. I will be serving as the new intern for Syracuse High School. My career started as a teacher at Davis High School. I taught psychology and sociology. Then for 14 years, I was a counselor at Northridge High School, serving as Department Chair for 10 years. During that time, I taught at University of Phoenix Graduate Program for Counselors and got the opportunity to teach counselors and get more counselors coming in our district. Most recently, I am Department Chair for Northlake and Junior High's Counseling Department and I currently work at Arizona College, teaching human development and psychology. I'm excited for the opportunity to take all my years of teaching and counseling and put them all together and now be an administrator. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chrissy Beecher. I am excited to be the Administrative Intern at Beaumont High. Currently, I'm the Dean of Students at North Davis Junior High and before that, I taught English at North Davis for 28 years. With me tonight are two of my daughters, Brittany Roberts and Sarah Beecher, who are high school teachers in Davis District. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Sydney Morse. I am currently a special education teacher. I am at Davis High. I've been here for the last seven years as the social behavior program teacher and I'm excited to accept the position as the Administrative Intern at Woods Cross High School.
Thank you, Ms. Morse. Next, we'll move and close out with- Next, we'll move and close out with the elementary administrative interns, beginning with Ms. Shannon Larson.
Hello. Hi, this is Shannon Larson. I'm excited to be here tonight. I will be accepting the position at Centerville Elementary School and Orchard Elementary School. My background in education started in California, where I taught for 14 years. I was a kindergarten teacher, third grade and sixth grade teacher. I developed a love and passion for kids and saw a need for counseling, and went back to get my master's in school counseling. So that brought me here to Utah, where I have been serving as a school counselor for seven years. I am so excited to have this opportunity to work as an administrator and to start a new journey. And tonight I have with me my husband Fred, who's been super supportive and gets to hear some of my stories, which is nice to have someone to talk to about that. And I have my daughter here, Riley. She's one of our six combined. She's a senior at Woods Cross High School, and so we have another one at Davis High School. So we've got two graduating seniors this year, and they're excited to start a new journey there as well. So, super excited. I love working with teachers and students and building connections and helping teachers work with their students and help them to become their best versions of who they can be. So thank you so much for the opportunity.
Hi, my name is Natalie Williams, and I began teaching back in 1994, a long time ago, with the Weber School District, and I've had quite a journey through quite a few different schools. I have been with the Davis School District for six years. I am currently a language arts coordinator, and I have loved that. It's been probably one of my favorite things I've ever done, but I'm very excited to be the administrative intern at Cook Elementary, and I'm looking forward to the opportunity to serve the people in that school. Oh, I need to introduce my husband. This is my husband. He is who I am today. You know, I'm who I am because of him. He's always been kind of my cheerleader and my, you can do anything you want to do kind of a person, so I really love and appreciate him. I have four children with him. We have three, we have three that are grown and in college. Two of them are married, so it's been fun having a daughter and son-in-laws join our family. And my youngest is a senior at Fremont High School. She's down at the girls' state game right now. We'll find out how they did soon. And she's graduating this year and leaving us to go to BYU this fall, so that is my family.
Hello, it's great to be with all of you tonight. My name is Brittany Brimhall, and I will be the new administrative intern at Ellison Park and at Windridge Elementary. I've spent the last six years as a fifth grade teacher at Reading Elementary, and I've also worked as a new teacher leader for the district. This is my husband John, and we have four children, four boys. Austin goes to Centerville Junior, and Caleb goes to Beaumont. Our oldest isn't with us, and then my, our other son Isaac is serving a mission for our church in Missouri. So we are just really excited, I'm so excited to get started, so thank you for this opportunity.
Good evening, I am Amber Hanson, and I have been offered the position of an administrative intern at Snowhorse Elementary and Endeavor Elementary, and I am thrilled about this new path for me. I have been in education for 24 years, this is my 24th year. Half of that was in first grade and half in sixth, so, and mostly all of that done at Heritage Elementary. So I'm thrilled for this new path in my life, and I appreciate the opportunity to introduce myself. Thank you.
Hi, hi, I'm Amy Thompson, and I was in this same meeting three years ago. I served one year as the assistant principal at South Clearfield, or the intern, and then I left to do some pandemic adventures. I taught this girl to read. I homeschooled for five whole months and became super committed for life to our public schools and everything they do for us. And I learned to code, and this year I have been the technology prep time teacher, teaching kids to code and apply digital skills at Canyon Creek. And my background before was all in Title I schools in Salt Lake District across the elementary grades and in special ed, and I am super thrilled and honored to be back.
Hello, my name is Jacey Vatongia. My family is here today with me. I have my four-year-old, Kayvani, my eight-year-old, Ossi, my seven-month-old, Koji, and then that's my husband, Monae. I'm currently teaching CTE, Family and Consumer Sciences courses, and coaching at Farmington High School. I also teach the Davis Connect courses, and my specialties are in early childhood education, the mentoring program with Summit, and Canvas. I graduated from the University of Utah with a Human Development and Family Studies degree, and I will receive my master's through Southern Utah County. I'm a product of Davis School District. I attended East Leighton Elementary, Central Davis Junior High, and Leighton School, and I'm very excited and grateful for the opportunity to be an administrative intern at Stewart Elementary School and West Bountiful Elementary School. So thank you to everyone on the school board for the great opportunity.
That's a tough one to follow, but my name is Emily Hunters, and I was offered the position of administrative, elementary administrative intern at Reading and Odyssey Elementary, so I'm very thrilled to be working with that community with, I've heard great things about the school, and also those principals are highly respected, so I feel honored for the opportunity to work there. I started with Davis School District in 2009 at West Point Elementary, where I taught third grade, and then I taught fourth grade for several years at Snowhorse Elementary, which is my homeschool, that's where my, my kids go, and they love it. And then last, two years ago, I think, it was not last year, I taught online for Davis Connect. So, and I taught second grade, and I loved that, learned a lot. And currently, I'm working at the district as the elementary mentoring specialist. So I work with Allison Riddle, and I work with Dr. Patty Brown in the induction program. So we do professional development for, you know, year one through to three teachers, and I have really enjoyed mentoring new teachers, working with them. It gets me excited for this position to work with, work with teachers in the school and see what an impact that makes. My kids weren't able to be with me tonight, but here's a picture. So this is my Hadley, this is fifth grader, and Whitney is in third grade, and Owen is in second grade. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Luke Ensine, and I am so excited that my school assignment is Sandy Springs Elementary. I am coming to Davis School District from Montgomery County Public Schools in Maryland. My experience includes a combination of teaching and leading as a team leader at the elementary and secondary levels, writing district-level curriculum, designing and leading remedial summer school programs, and serving, most recently, as a sixth-grade assistant principal. This is my lovely wife Rachel. We have been married for eight amazing months, and we are so excited about our new adventure and to join the community of Davis School District. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Peterson, and I am very honored to have the position at Eagle Bay Elementary, and I have been teaching 16 years. I started at West Clinton Elementary for just one year, and then I went to Fulton Elementary. And I have taught their second, third, fourth, fifth in a split, and I've done job share, and I've done everything, and I am so excited for this opportunity. This is my husband Brent. This is my youngest daughter Sadie, who's in third grade at Fulton Elementary. I've got Tyce, who's seventh grade at Mueller Park Junior High, and Olivia, who's ninth grade at Mueller Park Junior High. Thank you so much.
Hi there, I'm Barbara Solberg. I am, I've accepted the assignment as an administrative intern at Whitesides Elementary. My education career started as a teacher, an official teacher, after a lot of years of volunteering and substituting, at Farmington Elementary, and I, I've taught, I taught fourth, fifth, and sixth grade there with, and determined that I was an upper-grade teacher, and until I had the opportunity to teach second graders, and I learned that second grade is where we learn all the interesting things, that, those things that you just know that you didn't know where you learned it, you learned it in second grade. Became, loved these kids, and it was so much fun. So I've been, I'm in my fourth year as a math specialist, a Title I math specialist. I worked as, for, in that, at Adelaide Elementary, Crestview, and South Clearfield, and I'm excited to be able to work with Jenny Scow at Whitesides Elementary, so thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Solberg, and that concludes our new administrative appointments. Thank you all for waiting. Tonight's been a long wait, and we appreciate you and look forward to great things. Board, just want to cover also a couple of, or the rest of our principal transfers really quick. You have the information at your spot, but Serissa Thompson, currently the principal at Centennial, will move to North Davis Junior High to replace Dr. Paul. Mr. Chris Medrow will move from Mountain View Elementary to Columbia Elementary. Mr. Scott Hughes will move from Reading Elementary to Cook Elementary. Ms. Sue Ann Caldwell will move from Lincoln Elementary to Creekside Elementary. Ms. Diane Roberts will move from Whitesides Elementary to Crestview Elementary. Ms. Regina Exley will move from West Bountiful Elementary to Lincoln Elementary. Mr. Doug Forsgren will move from Hillfield Elementary to Snowhorse Elementary. Mr. Roger King will be, will move from Cook Elementary to Reading Elementary. Mr. Doug Hammer Schmidt will move from Tolman Elementary to Syracuse Elementary. Dr. Daryl Denhalter will move from Columbia Elementary to Taylor Elementary. Ms. Adrian Canet will move from Bluffridge Elementary to West Bountiful Elementary, and Ms. Marjorie Conrad will move from Antelope Elementary to West Point Elementary. Thank you, Board, for being patient, and just a couple things to finish up. Want to congratulate the Farmington High Nick Sells for first place in the 6A Division of the 2022 State Drill. Viewmont High Vicels captured their first-ever first-place 5A finish in the drill team state competition. Leighton High Land Sales earned fourth place in 5A, and Davis High Dats brought home third place in the 6A. Want to U.S. President's Scholars Program out of 71 students selected from Utah. Four of our seniors from Davis District, Hiram Bradshaw at Farmington, Spencer Bringhurst at Farmington, James Checkets at Viewmont High School, and Samantha Nichols of Davis High School. 71 students in Utah and four of them from our district. Congratulations to those students. The Mill Creek Junior High Girls Basketball Team and the Legacy Boys Junior High Basketball Team were crowned champions this year, and the Centennial Junior High Volleyball Team were named, were named district champions as well with undefeated seasons. Want to recognize Ms. Jody Reese from Sunset Elementary as the Student Advocate of the Year by the Davis Association of Elementary School Principals. Instructional Leader was Susan Andrews. Rookie Principal of the Year, Casey Pickett. Innovator of the Year, Ryan Van Natter, excuse me. Community Leader of the Year, Nisha Kilpak at Valley View. Principal Mentor of the Year, Kurt Farnsworth, Lakeside Elementary, and Most National Distinguished Principal of the Year, Darrell Flukiger, Dr. Darrell Fluk, or, excuse me, Darrell Flukiger Holt Elementary. Also, Centennial Junior took the NAL Championship. Central took second, Central Davis. And then we sent you the results from our most recent Academic Olympiad, but also in our Science Olympiad. Farmington High Disease Detectives took first. Centennial Junior High won the Rhodes Scholar, and Fairfield Junior High took the Anatomy, Physiology, Bioprocesses, Disease Detectives, Food Science, everything that everyone else didn't win, it sounds like. Everything's science, Fairfield. So congratulations to those schools. And the Davis High Girls and the Syracuse High Boys Swim Team both took fifth place in the 6A Division of the State Swim Competition. So just a few accolades for our great students and programs, as well as our principals and teachers. Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Superintendent. Impressive group of people. It's great to be able to see them. Sure, Ms. Phipps.
Yeah, it's probably, he's probably gone putting kids to bed, but I, I have to say that I was a little bit sad to see Tyler Paul's name on, on the list of moving, and, you know, one of the great privileges of being on a board for a number of years has been watching the true care. There's the thing of, of, of education and the academic side, and then the other things. I've just been grateful recently because Dr. Paul has made a huge difference at North Davis with children that have been at risk for suicide, and it's just been a great thing to watch, that sometimes our educators, what the public doesn't understand is the true care for, for them, for our students as individuals, and, and, you know, Dr. Paul, I'll come and find you and say this to you personally, but I would really want to just express my appreciation because, as I have talked with him about a couple of students that I've known in my own neighborhood, and he was very aware of them, and has reached out and made sure they were taken care of. And it's those kind of people that are, are working with our kids in Davis County schools, and as parents and others involved in education, we're just really blessed with some of the very best, and I'm excited to, to get to know some other people. But just wanted to express appreciation to Dr. Paul because he's made the difference in some lives of some children that have really struggled.
Thank you, Ms. Phipps. Board, we're going to move to the consent items. Is there any of the four consent items that you need information on, or would like to move to a board agenda item? If not, could I get a motion to approve consent items one, two, three, and four?
I'll make motion to approve items one, two, three, and four on the consent items.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ms. Stevenson, second by Ms. Girard, is to approve consent items one, two, three, and four. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, and the opposed? That motion passes. We're going to move to the business items. Beginning with the board calendar. As you review the board calendar, board members, is there anything that we need to add? If not, a motion to approve the board calendar, please.
I move we approve the board calendar as presented in the exhibit.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Eckersley, second by Ms. Tanner, is to approve the board calendar as presented in the exhibit. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, and the opposed? That motion passes. I talked with Dr. Oster earlier today on our second item, Head Start, Early Head Start Report. There is nothing other than the documents that we've included in the board book, so I would recommend that we have a motion to approve the Head Start, Early Head Start Report.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Head Start, Early Head Start Report.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Head Start, Early Head Start Report, second.
Motion by Ms. Girard, second by Ms. Phipps, to approve the, uh, Head Start, Early Head Start Report. Motion, or a discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? That motion passes. Um, we're going to invite Dr. Hill to the podium and, uh, Mr. Snow. This is the, um, Boundary West Point and West Clinton Elementary Boundary Adjustment on a First Reading.
President Robinson, Ms. Stevenson, members of the Board, Superintendent Newey, Mr. Carter. We're happy to be here tonight for the First Reading.
And want to share with you, want to share with you just a quick overview of the, the things we shared with you in the workshop. We're looking at a boundary adjustment between West Point Elementary and, sorry. I touched it. Sorry.
We're looking at a, an adjustment to the boundaries between West Point Elementary and West Clinton Elementary for the purpose of alleviating the enrollment at West Point so that we can wait out some time until we can build another building and hopefully avoid going to year-round school as long as we can. So, um, we'll share with you some of the projections that we have. As you can see, West Clinton's somewhat flattened out. The little dip there is from COVID years. And West Point continues to grow and many of the parents in the audience, I think, were, are, they have concerns about that. So we want to try and alleviate that. If we make the, uh, the proposal, if, if that goes into place, we make that adjustment to the boundaries, this is what it will look like. Obviously, West Clinton will still stay pretty flat, but West Point will continue to grow. And we know that. And the proposal that we're making at, at this point moves about 92 students out of West Point into West Clinton. And that's not going to be enough for a long time, but it will allow us to move a group of students that there's room for them to stay over the next three to five years at, at least. So that's our proposal, just to take that little bit rather than move a bigger amount that then have to go back to West Point or to another school. We'd like to have as little shuffling around as possible. So that's our mindset behind our recommendation. Go ahead.
As you can see on this slide, the, uh, current capacity of the buildings are comparable in total. However, at West Point Elementary, you'll see that, uh, for the brick and mortar, there's 142% of capacity. Uh, next door at Lakeside, it's about 117, where West Clinton was only about 103, 104%. If we make this change, you'll notice that, uh, West Clinton becomes a lot more like Lakeside. Uh, we realize that West Point is still over the capacity of the building and, uh, they, they, the extra percentage is what we have in portable classrooms. The, um, the nice part about this, uh, little section is that they're evenly distributed through the grades and it doesn't make a big impact, um, a negative impact at West Clinton Elementary, which is good. It also reduces about, uh, three classrooms worth of students at West Point Elementary. So this, uh, this map shows you, uh, the current boundaries. On the left side of the map is all West Point Elementary, clear to the county, down to, uh, the city lines of Syracuse. The area that we're suggesting be moved is this blue area. And, um, this is, uh, within walking distance, every single house there to West Clinton Elementary. And, um, I went out and checked this myself a couple of weeks ago and I walked, uh, from the, the Flint Greenhouse to the West Clinton Elementary. And that took me about 10 minutes. I, as I walked past, I noticed there's three crossing guards, uh, that, uh, Clinton City has placed at this school, uh, so you can safely, uh, get to that school. And there's also sidewalks on both sides of the street on, uh, that 1800 North. The, uh, dots on this map represent, uh, houses where elementary students, uh, who go to West Point Elementary live. They are currently bused to West Point Elementary, so this would be a change at those houses, but, um, they're all, um, within the 1.5 mile range. Um, we have a interactive web map on our, um, our website for the district. And so if someone wanted to know, they can find their address to see if they fall in that area. Scan that QR code. Was there any questions that you have for us?
Do you want a motion first, President Robinson, or do you want questions during the discussion?
Well, I think we need a motion and then we'll move to discussion.
Okay. I'll move that we approve the Boundary Adjustment from West Point, or between West Point and West Clinton Elementary on a First Reading.
Second. Motion by Ms. Mumford, second by Mr. Eckersley, is to approve the Boundary, approve the Boundary West Point and West Clinton Elementary Boundary, Boundary Adjustment on a First Reading. Now, discussion on that motion or questions for Dr. Hill or Mr. Snow?
Ms. Stevenson.
Well, I already shared my questions and concerns with, um, with you, with Dr. Snow. That very first map that you put on there, I know you gave us one, but it's about this big and even with glasses, I had a hard time seeing those streets. So could I get a little bit larger one sent out to us? I spent a couple of days ago, uh, a good two hours down in that area. That's really, that's Cheryl's area, but I, I chose to go drive it. And I drove it, I parked, I walked it. Um, after doing so, I, I, I did have some concerns and I brought those to, um, Mr. Snow and he said he would address those. I, I was trying to drive and check my mileage, my speedometer, I mean, you know, how many, what's it called, miles and, and get addresses and things. So, um, it was a little confusing to me, but I found some of, some of my distances were, Crane Field was much closer than what we were, um, saying, you know, we were sending. Anyway, Mr. Snow, Dr. Snow said he would get with me and we'd go over all of those, um, distances or, or you, Gwen. I just would like to know exactly what those distances are. I know tonight was just First Reading and, and that we'll give this some more discussion and, and, um, but yeah, I, I did have some concerns out. I didn't go during the school day like apparently, um, Steve did. It was after school, so I didn't really see the numbers and, and, and the crossing guards, but, uh, I need to do that during school time. But anyway, if I could get mileage rather than just on my car, you know, figured out it would, it would be great. So, thank you.
Ms. Tanner.
So, um, we have received emails about concerns at West Point that, um, the, the crowding is really, um, difficult there. How long is it predicted that this crowding will remain there, both with, you know, if a bond is passed and if a bond is not passed?
As you noticed, even if we make this change, all three, Lakeside and West Clinton and West Point will all be above capacity, which a lot of our schools hover above capacity. We do that on purpose so that we don't have empty classrooms sitting around. It's a wise use of the taxpayer dial, dollar. Excuse me. But what we do then next would, we would be looking, if we couldn't get a new school built and be able to move people out of those schools and alleviate that enrollment, we'd be looking at a year-round schedule in order to put fewer children in the building at the same time because as, what we're hearing from the constituents with, that talk about the overcrowding is the infrastructure. Because putting portables on the property doesn't give you a bigger bathroom or a bigger cafeteria. So those things are a problem sometimes, but what we also notice is our schools manage it extremely well. And it does make a longer period of time for lunch, but we've checked back with them. Children should be allowed to eat and be in there as long as they need to. So we'll follow up on some of those concerns that we can easily take care of, but that's kind of our trajectory. If we don't have new buildings, then we'll have to go to year-round.
Thank you. And, and so if we do pass a bond and there is a new school, school built in the area, and maybe Mr. Carter knows better about this, when would be the soonest that, that pressure could be alleviated?
It would start the spring after a bond's passed.
Okay. And then take like a year?
If.
Year and a half.
We hope.
Maybe.
Yeah. We hope, yeah. We hope we'd have it open by the, the following year fall, start school.
Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Phipps?
Yeah, I, I have still a lot of concerns and, and the numbers are huge and if you go drive, you'll see how many houses are springing up and, and the timing is going to be bad. Did the community council in the, at West Point get, was, was the idea of year-round even a discussion there? Was that, and the, so it was decided that wasn't the best thing? I'm, I'm just not sure and as, um, because I am hearing a lot of concerns about this and that it's still leaving West Point in a bad place and I don't know what the options are around that. Um, I didn't, so we remove, you said 90-something students from the school, but none of those relieve like, uh, the number of classes or anything because there's no grade, that there was even enough to remove a class of kids. Is that?
It would still end up because if you remove 92 children in the school, you remove that many teachers. They get, they move to a different school with the children or what have you. So it does alleviate classrooms. And we have some other classrooms that are being used for other purposes that we can look into opening those up so that we have more room if we need it. So we do have some options right now. The kids are all in a classroom or a portable and they are all in good shape. And, um, so if we are able to move some students out, that gives that much more room. I know it was mentioned that some of the prep teachers are having to go from room to room, which is not ideal, and yet we do it a lot in schools that are in this situation. And so we adapt as to what we use for prep time and we work it out so a teacher can leave the classroom while their students are being served by the prep teacher. So there are a lot of ways to handle it and, you know, we like to have plenty of room for kids to have their own classroom and prep people and everyone. But for a minute, we might have to tighten up just a little bit until we get through, get a bond passed, get a new school, or make decisions. Other than that, have fewer students in the school.
So I'm, I'm still concerned. So the number of students that we lose and the number of teachers that will be shuffled around because of the loss of the students don't necessarily equate to like one classroom that was removed and, and, and so I'm, I'm just not exactly sure, you know, it's one of those of, of a faithful thing, but, but, um, we'll lose teachers at West Point, we'll lose, um, some students, but not a classroom worth of students in any grade or anything. And so there's just some things where the numbers don't fully add up to be that, that it won't leave some bad situations. If, are we talking split classes? I hated that.
We have them everywhere. Just about every school.
There, there doesn't need to be split classes at this school. But if we assign teachers based upon student count, 26.85 students for a teacher, if you remove that many, you remove a teacher. So the school, the school will work it out and there will be three less teachers.
But there will be that many fewer students as well. So it does work out in the end, but it, it takes some, some working around and somehow it always comes out okay.
So just to clarify, the challenge of taking, because we're hearing kind of a push to take more than 92 students. The risk we run if we take more than 92 is that some of those students may experience another displacement within a short period of time. So we're trying to minimize that impact on families.
We also, the areas that have been proposed to us are areas that will, will definitely have more than 92 students in them when they build up. And we don't know at what rate that will happen. But we know that we would move quickly to fill up West Clinton way beyond where we're looking at and then they'd be in the same position that West Point is. So we're just trying to manage it.
So it's kind of an incremental decision, um, kind of feeding off what Ms. Tanner asked in the event that a bond didn't pass. We might have to make another such adjustment in, in a year or two. And then I, I appreciated the suggestion during public comment. I just think it's important as we're kind of looking at that whole picture of if we've got community classrooms or, you know, if we're using the building for those purposes, let's find more ideal locations so that we can maximize the building.
That's what I was referring to. But we'll look, we'll take a look at the space. In fact, we have a space committee meeting coming up right away. That will be one of the first things we look at is how we can alleviate that.
Ms. Girard?
So this is along the, the same lines of what has been said, but, so I know that a lot of this, you'll be able to talk to the parents at the open house about because to alleviate their concern that we're not taking enough. But I think when it is explained that, that, that if we're not careful, they would have to do another change, I think that they would understand that. So have you had calls from parents asking you that and you have explained that to some of the parents?
I have. Not necessarily to their satisfaction.
I was just going to say, what, what are they saying about that?
They love their school.
Yes.
Everyone wants to stay in their school and we, we love that.
Yeah, right.
And so, and, and everyone's fine if you move someone else. Don't move me. And I understand that. I think anyone who's been a parent gets that. But it doesn't change the fact that we are in just this little bit of time, we're going to have to make some different adjustments in order to get through till we do something.
But, but I would think the idea, if it's explained to them that, hey, if we do take more, then, then they may be late, looking at changing again in a short time would be something that they would.
And we'll continue to look at communicating that out so that they understand a little better.
Right. And we can, we can do a lot of that at the open house, you know?
The open house is the 22nd, I believe. At 6:30 on the, on the 22nd.
That's the, the hearing.
It's the hearing for it, yes.
Yeah. For adjustment like this, we typically don't have the big open house, but we'll certainly be here.
At the hearing.
We can answer questions.
But you can, but you will answer their questions that, that night.
You can explain that, that night.
If you call on me, I'll answer any.
Are you talking about the public hearing?
Yes.
Well, typically that's not a question and answer deal.
Well.
No, the people have a chance to make a public comment or pub, make a comment in the public hearing, but we don't respond.
So then how can we get that particular bit of information?
Well, this gentleman right here had his hand up. And so what I'm going to recommend to him and recommend to anyone else is that to email Dr. Hill, if you would, please, and then she can.
You can email me.
The board and the public board.
Okay, I'm just G. Hill. So email it right straight to me and then I'll get right back with you.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the public hearing is on March 22nd at 6:30 PM at Syracuse High Auditorium.
Right.
And, um, again, the, the way we will conduct that public hearing will be like our public comment. Um, and I can't remember if we decide on three minutes or two minutes, but any, we'll, we'll stay there as long as we have people, two minutes. Thank you, Ms. Britt. Any other questions?
Mr. Your mind, Steve sent us that bigger map so I can read it.
I have it written down.
Okay, thank you, Gwen. And, um, I'll be out walking again, so, uh, appreciate it. I don't, I mean, I, I'm confused with the emails we're getting, but they're saying how they, I don't, some say. how they, I don't know, some say they don't want to be moved, they'd want, of course, a different area to be moved, which would take more kids out. But I think we all understand how overcrowded it is. So I don't know, looking into using those classrooms in a different way would, would help us anything. I mean, this is just food for thought. This is me thinking. But it wouldn't help the, you know, dropping kids off and picking them up. It wouldn't help the lunch situation. So I don't know if that's the answer, but I have a lot to think through and a lot of questions, so.
We'll find out about how many classrooms could be opened up without making too big of an impact.
Even the fact that if a bond is passed, I'm trying to remember in relation to these other schools where that piece of property is that we have, and maybe in my own head, try to see where those boundaries would be. But can you show me on that, where that is?
So along with that bigger? On the bottom of this map, you notice where it says West Point Elementary is on top of the Schneider Bluff Golf Course. You go west over to forty-five hundred, and our property is there at four hundred north and forty-five hundred west. So if, you really can't see it, but it's just off the edge.
Okay.
It won't spread.
Any more discussion, Board?
So it's closer to West Point Elementary than any of the other elementary centers?
So the motion on the floor is to approve the West Point and West Clinton Elementary boundary adjustment on a first reading. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Dr. Hill, Mr. Snow, thank you. We're gonna move to item four, our Head Start Renaissance.
Before you, a proposal to replace the shingle roof at both the Head Start Building and the Renaissance Building in Cadesville.
I move that we approve the bid to Perks Roofing in the amount of one thirty-two nine seventy.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Mumford, second by Ms. Stevenson, is to approve the bid for the Head Start and Renaissance Academy Roof Replacement to Perks Roofing for the amount of one hundred and thirty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. Questions or discussion, I should say, on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Mr. Carter, Centerville Elementary Partial Roof Replacement?
Yes, same thing, although it's a little different construction. But it's proposed that we will replace a good part of the roof at Centerville Elementary. In addition to that, we will also do some seismic adjustments in tying the walls to the roof as we've done at other such projects. So it's our proposal and request approval that that bid be awarded to All Weather Roofing in the amount of five hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars. And I will add that, as Mr. Tanner has noted in the, in his comment, that with the current lead times and construction materials, especially roofing membranes, this project may extend beyond the start of school, but we'll start it as soon as it's out.
I move that... Sorry?
Go ahead.
I move that we award the bid for the Centerville Elementary Partial Roof Replacement to All Weather Roofing in the amount of five hundred twenty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Eckersley, second by Ms. Tanner, is to approve the Centerville Elementary Partial Roof Replacement. Award the bid to All Weather Roofing for the amount of five hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars. Discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Mr. Carter, the teen homeless shelter, please?
Thank you. I'm excited to discuss this project. Before you, this is a great partnership spearheaded by Ms. Lund in our foundation between the foundation, the city of Leighton, and the county, Davis County, to purchase some land and construct a homeless shelter for teens. You received in your packet a map of the area as well as the contract. It's proposed that we buy just under an acre that's on Fort Lane, close to Leighton High School. They'd have a good view of the football games at night from the spot for seven hundred thousand dollars. I'll add that the money to purchase the land, as well as the funds to construct the building and the shelter itself, are all donated. And either, we either have the money in hand or the commitments in hand through the work of Ms. Lund and our foundation. So we recommend approval of that. We, while we're buying this land and we'll oversee the construction of the shelter, it's important to note that we will not run the shelter. We will turn that over to a management company that, that's their business to do that. And if you have specific questions about that, Ms. Lund is here to answer any of those specific questions.
So Board, the motion would need to indicate approval of the purchase of point eight tenths of an acre for the purpose of building the teen homeless shelter for the youth of Davis County. A motion to that effect, please?
Do we need to include the cost?
Seven hundred thousand dollars. Thank you.
I make a motion that we approve the purchase of point eight tenths of an acre for seven hundred thousand for land for teen homeless shelter in Leighton.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ms. Tanner, second by Ms. Gerard, to approve the purchase of approximately point eight tenths of an acre for the purpose of building a teen homeless shelter in Leighton. Any discussion on that motion?
Oh, I do.
Ms. Stevenson?
I think this piece of property is a perfect spot for this. It couldn't be a better location. And as far as the management company that will be running it, I had the opportunity of going with Jody to St. George and looking at a shelter there, and that same company, the management company, and how they run things. I was, I've never been so impressed in my life as anything. It was, it was amazing to see how it's run, how, just things I would never have thought of, they have thought of. So I'm, I'm all on board for this. I think it's great, so. But you can direct your questions to Jody.
Ms. Phipps?
Yeah, I'd love an explanation, maybe a little more complete about how this different, how this differs from the facilities that we've had, that we have at Clearfield High and at Woods Cross and the others that are planned. And then maybe I'd like some information about, so teens, teens that are homeless, are they emancipated from adults? I guess I'd just like to hear how that works. They're teens that are homeless and without a family with them, or how that works, and, and if this exists in another place, how that works for families and others. So they're just on their own. I'd just like to hear a little more about what this looks like.
All right, I'll start at the beginning with how are they different from our particular drop-in shelters? So our drop-in shelters are actually part of our schools. They provide the showers, laundry, facilities, wraparound services, food pantry, day services. The shelter is an actual resource center with sixteen beds. So it will be a residential center for teens who are displaced at the time. So that leads to the second part of your question. Why are they? Who are they? Where are their parents? That is a full range. Some of these students are truly emancipated, or we call unaccompanied youth, not residing with a guardian. Some of the youth are in possibly dangerous, abusive, or situations or circumstances that have caused them to flee. Some of them are in, in a state of differentiation with their parents, and, and they have chosen to leave. But in all instances, the Organization of Youth Futures, who we would be contracting with to run this, their first and foremost goal is reunification. If it is safe, and it is secure, and there is a place for them to be, our number one goal is always to reunify that youth with their family and their parents. However, if not, then this gives them a safe place to be off of the streets. The average staying time that we're finding in the Youth Futures in the state of Utah is about thirty-seven days, that we have a youth that is residing in this home till we are able to place them in a more appropriate or safe, or a place in which they can thrive. We have had them stay as long as two hundred and eighty-seven days. That was an unusual circumstance, but on average, they stay about thirty-seven days. Did I cover all of yours, or did I, I missed? So the purpose of this one is, was we percolate up with these eight centers, well, will be eight, six we've approved, two which will be coming more for you. As we percolate the centers up, the most, the youth at the biggest risk factors, students who we cannot find another alternative for them, these will be the beds for them. It will keep them close to our schools, it will keep them in school, which is what we want them to be, so that we can connect them with graduation, other wraparound services, FAFSA and post-secondary opportunities. We see this as a great intergenerational poverty cycle breaker. But we gotta have a place to set these students when they don't have a place. Currently, we're sending them up to Ogden.
I just wanted to follow up maybe with this. So are they attached where, like DCFS is working with it? They're...
No, that's a great question. DCFS, foster care, those are wards of the state. Those are students who are involved in a whole nother set of programs. So they could access, these centers are open twenty-four seven, there are no questions asked, they are not centers where students can have drug addiction issues or a record. But those are two criteria that come in too. So you cannot be, this is not a center in that, in that particular direction. But when you start talking about foster care or students that are wards of the state, that is, they're two different programming. That doesn't mean those students couldn't be there in some instances with foster care or in that. But foster care already have a home. So not to mix up students that are in DCFS care, that this would be where they would send them. And these, when you're working with this population, there's not one answer. Every student is addressed and looked at individually and independently, and served at the level and where they're at. And so I don't mean to circle around the answer, but the answer to all of your questions is yes, and no, and possibly. But our most intent is to take care of these youth. Every child deserves to be safe, every child deserves to be clean, and every child deserves to be fed. And if this can bridge that gap so that we keep them in a progression towards a breaking intergenerational poverty, this is a great solution in our community.
Ms. Mumford?
Thanks for that explanation. Could you explain a little bit more in our packet? It mentions a partnership between the county and Leighton City and then the district. I'm assuming that's for the ongoing contract for the maintenance? Or is that part of the construction, the capital cost?
And part of the construction. So it is a private donation of seven hundred thousand dollars that has already been received by this foundation and the school district that will pay for the purchase of the land. We are working with the county on their ARP. They actually have a lot of other acronyms with it, but we'll call it CARES dollars, because I can't pull all of the, I wanna call it SRLP funds, but there's a lot of acronyms there, that we have been committed to one point eight million dollars. And we are working with the general contract that has been given by the county, that we have been granted the one point eight million dollars. That is for a six thousand square foot facility at approximately three hundred dollars a square foot. And we're gonna certainly try to squeeze that way far down as we work with the community members as we do that. But that should give us. So the partnership with the county is the one point eight million dollars. The partnership with Leighton City is they're working with us on their fees, some possible CBD, CD...
CBD, yeah.
CD, BG money to pay for even part of the property, which will then release part of that seven hundred thousand to go more towards construction. So the city's involved, the county's involved. Youth Futures will be writing for their own half a million dollars, which has already been approved and granted for first year of operation to open. And then the foundation.
Okay. So when the management organization writes for that grant, those come from either federal dollars or state dollars that are set aside for...
Yep, the opening dollars will be coming out of the county money as well for the half a million. We originally were going to write for that and then contract out. We made a decision collectively as the county that we'll let them write and account for that half million of operational opening versus us playing the middle person between it. I thought that was much cleaner than us writing for it and then granting it to them, and then we having to report at what we thought they did.
Great.
They can be their own entity to account to their actions. Thank you.
Ms. Gerard?
Well, I had some question about the partnerships too, but you've answered those. So, so let me just say that this is an outstanding project, and it's going to be a lifesaver for some of these, for all of these students who need it. And I'm just grateful for all the work that's been done and the donations that have made it possible, and grateful for our great partnerships with Leighton City and with the county, that together we can do this. So, thank you.
We live in an incredible community.
We do.
And everyone is all in, stepping forward and coming together with us to fill this gap. We had a great homeless coordination meeting this morning with the county, and a lot of accolades to the fact that we identified a gap, and we stepped forward, and as a community, are addressing one.
Helping.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Tanner?
Maybe you already answered this, but you've answered a lot of questions. So where will those students be assigned to go to school, and how would they get there?
Two great questions. So with McKenna Vinto Law, those students, when they arrive at the center, are allowed and actually guaranteed the right to return to their school of origin. So if that school, that child is attending Bountiful High, they can continue to resume at Bountiful High School. Or, because we're backdoors with Leighton, and we have a drop-in center, and they would rather go there, they can move their records to that, and we would, we would work with them on that. But every student under McKenna Vinto Law is allowed to stay at their school of origin. So that leads to the second. We're right on a major UTA bus line, and UTA, we have an incredible partnership with, those children don't pay to commute. We also have a partnership with Youth Futures that if they cannot bus, or it doesn't really work, or it's too early, they will transport the students to and from school as part of the contract through Youth Futures. So they will go to school. That will be, whether it is in a brick and mortar, or they're in online program, they will attend school.
Is that like a requirement for them to?
It will be with our MOU. Currently, Youth Futures isn't as tight in the other two facilities about mandatory school enrollment. But our conversation with Kristin Mitchell, as we said, we will take you on, that is one of the provisions that will be in the MOU, is they must be enrolled in some sort of academic program leading towards either their diploma or GED. If it's not negotiable, that's something we believe strongly in.
Yep.
What else can I help you?
Kristin Mitchell would be the gal that we're contracting with. Very impressive. She, everything we ask her, she, she knew. But she just was running such an inviting place. And how fun to be with Jody there, because Jody was just like a kid in a candy store. It was just so fun. But I do think the foundation's going to do another tour down there. So maybe you could ask the rest of the board members that haven't had an opportunity to join you at that time if they, if they wanted to go back.
Perfect. And if there would like to be a board filled trip down, I would love to host that and take any of you down to...
Very neat place.
And I know Kristin would be, there, there is one closer in Ogden. So we don't have to make the commute to St. George. However, the facility in Ogden is a very old home, and I have no desire to pattern ours in Davis County as to the Ogden one. So the visit to St. George was to see the vision of a six thousand square foot and how they were utilizing space. So if any of you would like to make a closer journey and still get a feel for the programming, which is out, it is outstanding. We house three to five students a month with them. They give up their Weber County space for our young people in Davis County. It's a great partnership we have. Don't tell Weber County I'm taking their beds. But it's a great place for us to put our kids. And if you would like to take a board trip one afternoon, I would love to host you up at Youth Futures, introduce you to Kristin Mitchell, who's the executive director, let you see the programming firsthand. The building is just a building. The program is identical. And actually, the programming began in Ogden. The program is identical, and actually, the programming began in Ogden. So you see the flagship program in which they started. They're an accredited, incredible 501(c)(3). They are well-respected in the community of homeless services around the state. I have full confidence that they will provide that for us. But I'd love to take any of you, any day.
Do they, do they take volunteers, those who are retiring and don't know what they're going to do with their life next year?
I bet Kristin could put you to work faster than you, you would even want. I'm sure we could find something for, for retirees to do to keep themselves busy.
Look for two Superintendent Newey's available office.
Oh, very good. We're going to keep him busy in the seven, the six of them we have open in the other ones, so we'll be bringing that back.
But let me just say this, and then we're going to vote on the motion that, you know that you've had great support from these gentlemen on the, on the dice here, Mr. Carter, Mr. Newey, and the others that have worked very closely with you. And we know, including those two men, how much credit goes to you. You, you'll never get the credit you deserve, but that's not why you do this. So you do this for kids, and, and we know that. It's a, it's a sincere effort on your part, not to receive any accolades, it's a sincere effort. And, and, and I, and I know how many times you envision a kid that needs help. And there'll be so many, and there have been many. But over the last couple of years, and we look at the years coming, the, the good work you've done, Jody, we have such a great appreciation for that, so thank you so much.
Thank you. I think Superintendent Zerbakin said it well. We just do our jobs. It's just part of it. We love children. This is what we're about. It's about making sure every child has the barriers removed and the opportunities to become their best self. And it's been a privilege. And I do thank Mr. Carter, because he has kept our district fiscally responsible through my visioning. And, and I will say than anybody, he gives me a good run, but for that, I really appreciate it. Because the process in building these has been thoughtful and deliberate, and I hope now proved. And so I do thank Mr. Carter and Mr. Newey and Mr. Zerbakin and our, and, and all of you, because we brought a very big idea that was new, and it hasn't really been embedded across the state, but it has caught on. And I'm happy to say I saw in the reading, there's $3.5 million that Representative Elison made sure was in the funding this year to ensure that other school districts could do what Davis is doing. I'm happy to be leading out on this. I said to them before, whether we get much of that $3.5 million, which we don't need much of it, but of course I will ask for it, our 10% that we should get on that. As long as we could get these from Logan to St. George, and that every child in the state who needed a place of refuge, it happens. It was worth every minute that we spent in this district on it. This is what children need. They just need one caring adult. They need a place of refuge, and it's my honor. So thank you. Thank you for allowing me to vision and to implement. I will be forever grateful for this privilege that I've had.
So just stay there while we vote. Board, the motion is to approve the purchase of approximately .8 tenths of an acre for $700,000 for the purpose to build a teen homeless shelter for the youth of Davis County. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you.
Before you leave there, Jody, I have to give one shout out. We recognize a lot of people, but your husband is a saint. I do not know how that man lives with you. I spent some time with him in St. George, and she never stops. And I am sure even if she ever makes it home and they settle down at all, it's, it's constant. And you don't even dare throw out a suggestion to her, because it's, she takes it and away it goes. But he is an amazing man.
He is, he's my better half.
Oh, he is amazing. He's so supportive of you, and of us, of us. He's like our biggest cheerleader, so.
He is, he is, thank you, thank you.
Dr. Toon? Dr. Toon will present, presented early this evening. Board, as you know, the current year calendar adjustment on a first and final reading. Dr. Toon, anything else other than vote?
No, President Robinson, Board, I don't have any additional information. Just expect, or hoping to have a motion to approve the three early out days, two-hour early dismissal on March 21st, 28th, and April 18th for all schools.
So our motion, Board, would be just to approve the current year calendar adjustment on a first and final reading. A motion to that effect, please?
Sorry, my mic's being crazy tonight. I move that we accept the current year calendar adjustment as proposed by Dr. Toon on a first and final reading.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Mumford, second by Ms. Stevenson, to approve the current year calendar adjustment as presented by Dr. Toon on a first and final reading. Discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, that motion passes.
Thank you, Dr. Toon.
We, Board, if we could, we've got, still got to go to closed session. We can do board reports if we can try to do that as quickly as possible. Ms. Mumford, would you like to begin?
Yeah, I'll do 30 seconds. Just want to express appreciation to Congressman Stewart, who came to Woods Cross High School when he had a free morning and celebrated our Sterling Scholars. I had great visits at South Davis Junior High, Farmington Elementary, and Woods Cross High School. Felt like we got a lot of excellent feedback at our Bountiful High Town Hall regarding the superintendency selection. I've been meeting with patrons on the summit issue and their priorities for the superintendent, and had a lot of great feedback. And we conducted our focus group with community council chairs last week and got really valuable information that we'll prepare for a report to bring to the Board, hopefully in an April workshop. And just good luck with all our coaches and music and band and arts directors out there. There's lots of great performances and events happening. So I know spring season is a huge lift at the high school level, and we really appreciate all those that make it happen for students.
Ms. Phipps?
I'm, I'm just going to pass.
Ms. Gerard?
Just real quick, I'm grateful for all those that, that came to the town halls and all who filled out the survey. And, and I've been in lots of schools where I've received input, and I've appreciated all the input that I have received from community members and administrators, and grateful for that. And, and was able to participate in an annual meeting of the Leighton Community That Cares organization. And this group is doing a lot of good. And I know there are other board members involved in Community That Cares in their communities, and I just appreciate all the work that is being done there. They had a great mental health night at Leighton High that I was able to attend. And it wasn't sponsored by Leighton Community That Cares, but there were lots of organizations there, but they were a part of it and, and had a table there as well. So, so much good being done by that group.
Stevenson?
I know our time's short, I'd be amiss if I didn't share just a minute about our visits to Syracuse Junior and to Leighton Elementary. As you know, when we go to a board visit, the principal chooses a, someone for us to honor or to recognize. And at Syracuse Junior, that principal chose Ms. Callie Hansen, to recognize her for all the good she does, and she just happens to be the daughter of Victoria. So it was nice to get to meet her and to see what an amazing daughter Victoria has. Also, at Leighton Elementary, we recognize that principal chose Christine Christensen. At, at that visit, there were four, Gordon and I were there, and there were four little guys that entertained us, is what they really did. But they were supposed to be telling us about how the house program works that they, they do there at that school. And they were all delightful. But this little Derek is, isn't he, he's, he's going places. It was just so much fun. Ree got there a little late, and I had to ask, ask that first little guy to repeat again. It was so fun, so cute. Amazing things in both schools. There's a teacher named Jessica Constant down at Syracuse Junior that's running STEM program, the robotics program. But I went to the robotics state tournament last Saturday, and our own Jessica Constant, teacher at Syracuse Junior High, was running the state, state program. So it was, it was pretty amazing. So my grandson did happen to take state. I'll just throw that in there, but that's not part of my report. One last mention is I was down at the Music Educators Convention in, in St. George, and I have family down there, so I go often. But the Viewmont High School's wind ensemble performed down there, a concert, packed the place. People could hear it from a distance, and, and they came running. And I was able to sit in and watch that. So a shout out to those students, and to Dan Chasten, as he is their leader. Great, great program going on down there with that, as I'm sure there is in all of our schools, so that's.
Ms. Tanner?
Yeah, I too appreciate all the feedback that I've been getting about superintendent search and the summit program. Parents and teachers both, their feedback on that is much appreciated. And, sorry, I got to put my glasses on. Well, the, the parent focus group was just excellent. The community council presidents that we had and the feedback that, that we, they gave was genuine and helpful. And the day on the hill, thanks to USBA for putting that on, that was a good experience to meet with legislators and share our viewpoints with them. Thank you.
Mr. Eckersley?
At Syracuse Junior High, we also, besides what Maria shared with us, we got to go to the O'Reilly Building that we just approved the purchase of that, and principal got to share with us what they were going to be doing there, and it was exciting to hear that. And while we were doing that, he, it's a closed campus, and he caught a couple of students that had gone to, was it a Wendy's that was right next door? And to watch him handle them, leaving the campus. And it was, it was neat to see, because he handled it, he handled it very well. The, the trip to, to Leighton Elementary was exceptional. The, the house program that they do there, it's like Harry Potter that they do, when they get points or they lose points for this or that. But the thing that is done, it, it's motivated them to be good students, but it's also given them a, a spirit of place. They love their school, they love their teacher, their principal, they, they love it. And I think that is, that is something that needs to be done to have successful schools, is to have that, that spirit in the schools, that you love where you, you go to school. Was able to also go to community council meeting at Centennial and appreciated very much the input from parents on how they felt about the summit program and how it was affecting their children. Also visited Jason Smith at Northridge High School, had a good visit with him, and he took me to see their, their mental health center. And that was really neat, where they just have a place where kids can go. I mean, they don't go there all day, it's not a place to go slough, but they can go there for 15 minutes and calm down if they're having a, a bad moment before they go, get back into, to school. And he also showed me the, the work that they have done so far at their teen center, and that looks like that's going to be a, a great place also, that's all.
Thanks, Mr. Eckersley. All right, Board, we need to go to a closed session. That concludes our Board Business Meeting. So we need a motion to go to closed session for the purpose of negotiations and personnel.
I'll make a motion that we move to a closed session for personnel and negotiations.
I'll second.
Is that Ms. Mumford? We have a motion by Ms. Stevenson, second by Ms. Mumford, to go to closed session for the purpose of personnel and negotiations. Ms. Mumford?
Yes.
Ms. Phipps?
Yes.
Ms. Gerard?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Eckersley?
Yes.
We'll meet up there, Board, in about five, six, seven minutes. In the, the meeting will be in the boardroom on the third floor.